Uh, that's Monday, day fifteen, twenty seventeen.
No, I'm, uh, is that the hot scene or can I sit at that table? I just like to have a place to put my stuff.
They're still on, getting ready.
Yeah, well, a meeting's called due order. Thanks, Ken.
What?
Will you please rise to pledge allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your hands are already all set for the pledge. That's good. That's awesome. You're all, you're all ready to go. Okay, so this workshop is, uh, on the management letter, uh, the thirty-two pages, uh, plus the memorandum from the Department of Revenue that, uh, we went over. Well, thank you for coming, finance team. That's awesome. Carl, I'd like to go over first and foremost is obviously the stuff that we've already indicated to, uh, the Department of Revenue in the audit companies that, uh, we've been working on certain things that just stands right now and what those things that we need to complete and, uh, and what timeframe we should have those completed before we go into the other auditory, uh, audit responses, uh, you know, and, um, and policies and procedures that obviously that Collins will be providing to us in the next couple of weeks, months. You know, getting us moving in the right direction, you know, concerning, you know, uh, you know, a bad check policy, free cash policy, stabilization policy, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Um, okay. Uh, so, um, let me just find where some of those are. So, for instance, um, on page eleven. Yep. Let me tell you that Kelly, uh, Carol Lee and I met last week. We have been doing an informal review. Uh, we talked about dates. So there's basically a couple of things to close out each month. Uh, the first is that the checkbook itself be reconciled. The second is that the checkbooks, uh, the cash books be reconciled against the general ledger. Uh, and then the third major issue, in addition to, you know, reviewing revenues and expenses, of course, is that the receivables from the, um, other departments, uh, be reconciled against the general ledger. Uh, the sewer section, we can speak to separately, uh, when we get to those items. Uh, but we did settle upon some dates and I think by the end of this month, uh, we'll have that codified uh, for presentation to you along with a form, uh, that we're gonna use each month.
Is that like a checklist?
Yes, setting out the dates of each one that's gonna be done and then, uh, at the end of the month for sign off for the TA.
And are you guys working towards, uh, the recommended date, which was, I think, the tenth of every month?
Well, um, actually by the time that the, the checks statement still come in by mail.
Okay.
So it's gonna be closer to the fifteenth and then I think we had like the twentieth. Um, I, I can't remember exactly, so ladies, please correct me, but then we allowed a few days to reconcile, uh, the cash book against the general ledger and then we allowed a few more days to reconcile the collectibles against the general ledger.
Okay.
The accounts receivables. Um, so we're probably by the twenty-fifth of the month, by the time we get all the different steps done.
So you'll be closing the books on the twenty-fifth of the month?
Basically, yeah.
Can I ask a, um, a couple of questions while we're on this page?
Yeah.
What do the department heads use to ensure that they are not, um, overspending? Like, do they have, do they have like their own, um, spreadsheet where they say, you know, before anything comes up here for the warrant? Or, um, like if, if we, I can't use Kent as an example, but if, if we called, um, you know, okay, if we call Holly and just, you know, like came in and said, oh, okay, so you have this much in this account and like where do, where do you stand? You do the budget to actual, but that's not really, I mean, is there a checking balance there?
The, um, each department should have their own, for each one of their GL accounts should have a separate spreadsheet. Top of that spreadsheet, they put in their budgeted amount that they're given for that GL account. There's to enter everything that they do in that, so it deducts it as it goes. Then when I send the budget versus actual, that is when they're to compare with what the budget versus actual has to what they have. If there's any discrepancies, they're supposed to notify me right away. I send out the detailed reports and then between us, we figure out where the problem is. Was there something miscoded when we entered the payables? Did they not record something, a bill that they had sent? Um, there's a number of different reasons.
Is everybody using the same type of spreadsheet so that it's?
It's my understanding they are. Um, we do have two departments that, you know, we're still working through, working with them, um, but we're making progress. We're moving forward. We're not there, but we're moving forward.
And that will be part of, um?
That's part of when the budget versus actual goes out.
Now, there needs to be policy and procedure for that.
Right.
So that will be part of that as well. So it's not just policy and procedure for, um, fiscal stuff. It's for the department heads to make sure that they're entering, um, or whomever they so desire, um, to do that. So if, you know, the TA were to just say, hey, can I look at your spreadsheet? It should be pretty, um, up to date and you're not entering it all at the end of the month or whatever the case may be. Okay, okay. And then the other one is I had asked this, you know, I know that we are, um, behind, um, and, um, cash flows. We don't, we can't really do any of that right now, but we are working toward that.
You don't have the capacity to do that at this point and I would bet.
When would we maybe?
When we have a treasurer, correct? When we have a?
Oh, it's not even been able to be done now?
Oh, I would bet you'd be eighteen months before you'll be able to do that.
Okay, that's, yeah. So I just wanna make sure that that's in.
And what are the constraints on providing a cash flow? What's hindering?
Historic records.
Everything, all the records in order.
Historic records.
Okay.
So when I, when I ask, when I ask a collector, um, okay, the commitment just went out and it's due on, let me say, February one? And it's for three million bucks. What can I expect to get in week one, week two, week three, week four, week five, week six? They, they can't tell me unless they sit down at that moment in time and go back and look at, okay, so in sixteen, what did we get in week one, two, three, four, five, six? And then a year before, and a year before, uh, the most difficult part.
You're talking about a forecast, a forecast cash, not a cash flow.
Well, that's what Diane was asking about, I thought, was cash flow projections.
Yes, I wanna know, yeah, I wanna know both.
Okay.
We haven't, I haven't been able to receive either.
Or with a, with a, a forecast.
Without some, without.
Statement of cash flow wouldn't, you wouldn't need record for. That could be performed on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis.
Well, if you're looking for cash flow projections, I need historic data. And I thought that's what Diane was asking about.
Yeah, I'm looking for, yeah.
But doesn't have, VEDAR have the ability to hold that history and be able to produce a projection then? A cash flow projection report that VEDAR can generate?
If we were using, um, using it properly on the, on the cash book side. If we had all of our accounts in the, you know, in the cash book and using the cash book instead of an outside source, it would be a greater, much greater asset to us to be able to look at that.
So to me, I mean, we're paying software licensing for this VEDAR, yet we're not utilizing it. So to me, that ought to be a project that ought to be on the plate is, all right, how do we get out of using this outside source and use the system as it's intended to be used?
Outside source, meaning Excel, the what I'm working on.
Yeah.
So I, I've been helping them and, um, it's, it's hard when you don't understand all the pieces just entering data and Kelly and Carol Lee and I were talking and I just, I said, well, why aren't we, can't we use VEDAR for that? And they both just kinda chuckled. So yes, we should be able to, but it is, it is a project. So that's why, I'm just saying like, if we know that we're gonna work towards that, like how much time are you thinking that? Cause when I had asked for that previously, it was because, you know, we have these warrants coming in and, you know, prior to your time, you know, when I say, well, what is the funding source? And, you know, they're like, oh, we have a projection of getting these many commitments and then we're gonna do this. And I, I thought that that was happening, but until your time, I, I didn't really know that that truly wasn't happening. So I just wanted to make sure that that's in, you know, part of the whole, um?
Right, I mean, we need to include that as, I mean, even though that may not be something specifically listed here, it needs to be done because, you know, why would we use Word if we're not gonna type words in it, you know? We're gonna use it to do charts or something. That doesn't make any sense.
Be happy to be corrected, but I don't believe VEDAR is gonna be able to do truly what, what you think it can in terms of doing cash flow projections.
Well, but it, it, it's going to be an easier way to look at what we're doing versus trying to do se- because we can run a report that gives you a full spectrum versus going page by page, scrolling over, finding out this account, this account, where you are.
I, I'd like to go back if I might.
Sure.
This is a thirty-plus page management letter with probably seventy-five plus or minus specific action items in it. If you gave each one a number and tore it apart. And I do think that, uh, you need to be careful to tackle the things that are frankly of the most immediate concern. And right now, uh, properly accounting for the money, yes, cash flow projections are nice, but you can do them on the fly if you, if you have to, if you think your cash is getting low. Um, I, I really would encourage the board to concentrate on the most immediate issues uh, and to be realistic about, uh, the amount of staff time that you have uh, to tackle these things in addition to their daily workflow.
So why aren't we doing a Gantt chart then where we list all seventy-five items down this side and a timeline across the top? And then we can prioritize those seventy-five ones that need to be hit first and so forth and gauge out who's the responsible chairman or person to get that project underway. So that we can lay it out to know, how long is it gonna take us to get there?
And, and that may be the result of tonight. I frankly think that is an excellent, excellent approach to it.
I think until we, um, come together to do this, and it's one thing to have a, you know, an audit presentation done by Tony, which was wonderful, but until I sat down and went through twice now, it's not a question of, I'm just asking for timing. I'm not saying to, I made a million notes in here. I'm not saying that that's the most priority, but if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna go through this, I wa- I mean, until we all talk, I have questions and I just wanna know, you know, rather than saying, Tony, Tony, cause it could be something you could just answer. And then that's that. So that's really where I'm at with this. I mean, if we don't even know what we were gonna talk about or how we were gonna, you know, present it, I just, I, at this moment, I have questions and then I think, yes, we should be doing exactly what, you know, Doug is saying is, what are the priorities and who's going to accomplish them and what do you feel, you know, is, is the best thing to do, but?
So if I may, um, when I went through this, this book, um, page nine, it starts with material weaknesses and instances of non-compliance. And then I think it stops at like page twenty-one, uh, where it comes into kinda best practice suggestions. Yeah, general findings and, and recommendations. Twenty-three and on, those are like, that's nice to do. That's something that's down the road and we're, we're good, but really the meat and the potatoes of this is nine to twenty-two. And these are, anything that's material weakness is something that's very serious and we should look at these very properly. And anything before this is the, you know, informational items such as the, the Modernization Act and things like that. So I actually did an Excel spreadsheet and I broke down all of these items and just by, by line item going to budget management, general fund overdraft and just broke them all out. And when I did that, uh, really all I did was I just broke down exactly what he's saying. So I have a key issue here is budget management. That's the first one we're looking at. Uh, the issue breakdown is deficit spending. That's, that's the problem that we have is that we're spending too much. And, and I think, you know, it, the thing that kinda we get caught up on, on this is that it says the fiscal year twenty thirteen and twenty fifteen, that's where the issue was. And now that we have Kelly here, we don't have that issue, but if we didn't have Kelly here, would that issue still be here? Would, would we face that problem? And I think when we look at these, these items, material weaknesses, he's not saying that we're doing it wrong now, but he's saying that there is a problem and that we might face if we don't have someone in there doing it right because there's no policies, procedures to outline these items. So the past is the past and I, just moving forward with this, I think we need to identify these key issues on why this happened. Not because of the person, but generally what it was and that's what I did. So on the, the budget management, I mean, if you wanna just walk through this real quick and we'll just find out what it is and ways to remediate it, um, I guess that's probably the best approach and we can figure out a priority sending from that and say, you know, what's more important, what's less important on these.
I think that's a great idea. Um, there's two issues that we need to discuss, the sewer department and with what we need to talk with Carol Lee. If we could do those first so that they can go.
Okay.
So that they don't have to sit through all of the meeting. I think that would be a good thing so that they can get on with their, their night. Um, so if you turn to page twenty-five, that's where the sewer department starts and we can get, go through what Kent and I have worked out, talked about. Now go ahead or you want me to?
Well, you go ahead.
Okay.
You're doing a good job so far.
All right. So in the center part where it says the sewer commitments, um, I have spoken with Kent about the, um, the sewer commitments and how things are done on their end, what we're doing on our end. Um, so the two-step process that we have worked out is when they have commitments now, each quarter, they're gonna be sending me that report. Um, we haven't been getting that in the past. So every quarter when they send their billings out, they will send me that report so that I can book that as a receivable on our end. Um, then monthly, which is another thing we haven't got, usually we get this at the end of the year for the audit and we need to be current on that. So then each month included in this, the, to the twenty-fifth will be a reconciliation of the sewer user charges receivable to what the sewer department has. And if we have a discrepancy, you know, in that twenty-five days, we'll be able to figure out where, you know, where we're off and be able to reconcile that monthly, which again, we've been doing just with the audit. So that should clear up, um, the sewer commitment, um, the sewer commitment issue that we have. Um, I know there was discussion about, um, the, the sewer receivables coming in-house to the treasurer collector and that being, um, you know, taken into the treasurer collector's office. Um, and Kent's gonna talk to you about that. And then I think the other thing for the sewer was the backup part. And so Kent, if you wanna talk about those two issues.
Sure. Before, just so we can keep it relevant here. Does this, um, the commitments and the reconciliation, I had include when people are behind. So I had a couple of customers reach out to me because they had paid, but it was still stated through the sewer department that they were behind and they were not. So how can we cinch that up so that, that that's? Some people have paid double and they didn't really have to because it didn't either get recorded here or recorded with you. I can't remember the whole thing, but?
Sure. I mean, I actually can. Um, one of the advantages to sitting one wall away from that kind of action. And to my knowledge, every one of those instances that you referred to is because someone was seriously delinquent and we did the sewer lien, so they ended up coming up here and paying, and then paying us too. And it was actually a person, I believe that you're referring to, I could be wrong, that had seven or nine delinquent properties. So?
Nope, this was just the one. There were, there were two and they were just regular.
Sure.
Um, they just had one property. So it doesn't really matter who they are. I just wanna see like how we can firm that out.
Well, it would matter if it was seven or nine properties because we only had one person that was in that situation. But like I told people, I mean, I, I listened through the wall. The way we have it set up now by design, actually during the upgrade, is that secretary, you know, secretary and a half's office is first in the door and that's basically to alleviate the distractions to me when I'm working on other things. If anything, they have any issue, customers that are irate or whatever, they come over and get me. If I don't hear it, I can go, usually go over there and shut them down first. But, um, historically, we've placed on the order of fifty homes sewer liens against them. And I took it over actually because I, I had gone to small claims court and, and had success on that. But just looking at the whole process myself, that I ramped up the sewer lien process and brought it from, um, average of fifty to two hundred and fourteen, I think. And at one point advocated for over three hundred. So the reason why I digress and say that is with a quadrupling of the number of sewer liens, more than a quadrupling, the number of complications that have resulted have actually been minimal. And what I tell people when they come in and say they've paid twice, which in most cases they haven't, they're mistaken, is you know what? Pay your bill on time, get in touch with us, make arrangements. This kinda stuff won't happen. This is an anomaly. You know, it's like going on vacation, get a flat tire on the way. It's gonna complicate things. So it's kinda the price you pay for doing business. Not that we haven't and we won't continue to work to make it more fluid and user-friendly, but you know, I tell people, this is, look, bear with me. This is one of the prices you pay for being so delinquent in your charge. Pay on time, there won't be a problem. So I think it's worked exceedingly well and I'll be interested, um, to see by the end of this fiscal year, you know, how much revenue's we've taken in because at one point, you know, I think we have a million dollar budget. Um, and we're close, we were over two hundred thousand dollars, I believe, over two hundred fifty thousand dollars in arrears. I mean, it's just ginormous. And we've, we've whacked that down quite a bit.
Right.
Um, you know, and there's, there's ancillary benefits too. You know, with the business, business permits. Um, we've had business owners that were seriously delinquent, I mean, forever and getting worse. I mean, let's face it, you know, after two thousand eight with the crash, uh, that's a reason for things to get worse rather than better. But, I mean, I actually, trying to find ways to make the collection process more effective and efficient, went further into the bylaws, which states that you have a year, you can be a year delinquent and still operate a business. There's also a bylaw further down in the book that says you will not get your business permit renewed unless you are in good standing. My definition, I believe most people's, is you don't owe us any money. So, I mean, we ended up taking in twenty, close to twenty thousand, maybe more than twenty thousand dollars, um, in delinquent fees from one business alone. So there's, there's a lot of benefits for the, for the amount of, uh?
I don't, I don't disagree. That I'm happy that it's being done. I just wanna like cinch up the procedure piece of it of what comes to you, what comes here. And if they shouldn't be getting, um, business stuff, which I'm glad you brought that up, then we should know that before, um, uh, we approve anything. So it's not just, are you behind on your taxes? You know, we have, we should look more into that. So it's just really making sure, I agree. I think, thank goodness you found a way to, um, figure that out because you can't, um, sh- sh- you know, shut it down, so to speak. So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not unhappy with that at all. I just wanna see if we can, just, just like us.
There's definitely room for improvement. And I mean, we've, I, I think, I mean, and I, believe me, I tend to be my worst critic and I honestly feel that everybody, you know, everybody that's involved in the sewer department and at the town level has done an absolutely exceptional job at, you know, the great increase that we've done in these sewer liens. And hasn't been glitches yet, but I, I really feel like been minor. And we'll work to get rid of them. I mean, we should for a hundred percent.
The residents who contacted me knew that they were behind, but it's not like me to just, I won't just ignore our situation. So for them and, and for us. And it's no, it's not a, it's not a criticism of you. It's not a criticism. I just wanna be sure that we are all communicating, um, together. So I am, again, Holly, maybe if we can just keep that in the back of our head too, to just like ask, you know, are they paid on everything? Not just, um, taxes. And maybe they won't have had a lien on their property, but they're still behind. So? And if they're not in good standing, then we should make it that way. But I just really wanted to know if we could just kind of, you know, that's one piece of it that I don't really think would take a lot to figure out. Just what are you sending here? What are they doing? And how can we just pull that a little bit closer together? That's all.
Almost sounds like though conflicting bylaws. If we have one bylaw that says you can be a year behind and we have another bylaw that says you have to be in good standing, those two things are conflicting with one another.
Well, they, they seemingly don't conflict, Doug, because, and this is something I'm not really up on, but it's, if your business license doesn't expire, then you can be a year behind. But if your business license expires, then you need to be in good standing. So I don't know if everybody's business license, you know, I mean, I, I used to have a side business. It was for two years, I think, ten bucks. So if you don't, if you're not on the ball and pay the ten bucks before it expires, that's kinda the loophole that I found, you know? So I don't know. I mean, with something that could be visited, but I don't know if it's really necessary because first of all, we don't have that many businesses in town. Second of all, most of them, um, pay in a timely manner.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
We don't normally entertain questions from the audience in a workshop, right? So please feel free to send me anything that you, cause you know, I'll answer.
So the other two things, Kent, were the, um, your sewer backup and recovery, what your new plan is for that and then bringing the, uh, collection of your sewer user charges in-house with the collector. Those are the other two things we talked about.
The first one, the sewer backup, I was kinda surprised to see it in the management letter because I thought, and I still think now, that except for one small thing, which we have since changed, that we satisfied the auditors' concerns. This is from, uh, December fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. I had sent out an email to our, um, computer expert, Tony Gallati, and asked him to respond to Mr. Taran Zee, Taran Zio's concerns. And, uh, Tony wrote, "Your backups are performed on a regular basis on tape backups, which should alternate monthly with an off-site location switch. The backup is a full image backup, which can allow for either complete restore or specific data restore when needed. You are also operating in a fault tolerant environment with dual disk drive update to prevent any data loss from a disk drive failure, as well as a backup dual power supply as part of the system configuration." There was a concern or somebody had mentioned about, do we back up to a cloud? So I sent another email out to Tony, um, just a couple of weeks ago. And he wrote, "The system configuration, the billing system is running under is not consistent with the format of a cloud backup. The tape backup is necessary in order to recover any data required by the system. You are also running a fault tolerant system with dual drive processing, which should eliminate the requirement for backup recovery from a disk failure. The only time for a backup recovery would be if something was done operationally by mistake that required an earlier version of data from a backup." The only glitch in the, um, report that wasn't covered in here was, um, secretaries were storing the tape backups on top of the dual hard drives. Probably not the best idea. So we've since moved them, um, to another location at the plant. They're in a sentry safe that's fire. And I don't know if it's moisture proof, but it's probably thirty inches off the floor. So, I mean, I think we've got all the bases covered. I don't understand a lot of the computers though.
Well, the issue is, is, once again, this is a complete recommendation. This isn't very urgent at all. Um, sewer backup and recovery is, what he's saying is that if that plant were to blow up, say, God forbid, that thing's erased from the face of the earth, that we wouldn't have that data on our books. So what he's saying is that by operating in a cloud base, you can store this at a remote location.
Sure.
And if anything, you know, say it was flooded or whatever, that all that data's not lost.
Okay.
So by which?
We're definitely amenable to doing it.
Yeah, and, and once again, this is, this is like a, you know, if you can do it, that's, that's great. These are just recommendations. So this isn't a very urgent issue.
Maybe we could move the tapes up here or something, you know?
Should take them to a different location.
I mean, you can't, believe me, I've, I've had my computers crash before and stuff, so I know the pain that's associated with that and?
So cur- currently, there's only one set of tapes?
Correct.
Okay, so when we were doing tape backup and, um, I worked in a servicing department, we did two. And every, we didn't, there was like a group of us, um, at the management level. There would be one tape backup in a, um, wherever it was, and then one of us had to take it home. So we would rotate, um, who would do that. I mean, you can have a disaster at your home too, but it could be, you know, if something were, at least we would know, but we also at home couldn't just keep it anywhere. We had to, we had special, um, fireproof. I mean, I still have that safe that I would use. They weren't very, but again, we? have that safe that I would use, they weren't very, but again, we, the same person didn't take it all the time, and that was more for sensitive information and and it was locked when it came home, and we had to verify that that was done, so if there is only one, two Camerons, I mean, I think using um the cloud is is nice, but we all know about data breaches and that kind of stuff, so, and I'm not saying I know anything about that, but if for right now, if you had to, you know, if you had two and you brought it home, or just to be assured that if something were to happen, at least you would have something, and I think those tapes were like a week behind, so, you know, cause we had to like swap them out.
Right.
Cause again, that's the issue, you only have one set, you've got, I'm sorry, so when you got one set, you you don't have any historical thing if you did have to go back and check something. And also, you've got the worry of the physical tape breaking or getting, you know, a magnetic charge to it.
Sure.
Now, the data's corrupt on it, and you've got nothing else, so there should be a minimum of two sets.
Just something until you can figure something else out, like what Cameron said, but it would be a terrible loss to to lose all of that, and should you would not, so that's, it was just, that was my, someone should take a backup home as well as what I wrote.
We just had the sewer secretary's computer crash. Um, well, actually picked up a virus or malware, whatever you call it, one of the worst ones there is, and um part of the problem was just the computer was so old, so we've since purchased a new computer and had it loaded onto that, and we had some more secure firewall put on, so a lot of it's just updating um also that that we haven't been as um on the ball with as we.
On our regular computers here, what do we use as a um, well, not a a backup? Like, all my files on both of my computers are backed up to Carbonite every single night, and that goes, so, and I've had to recover um stuff I've accidentally deleted usually, but from from that, you know, it's, I don't even remember how much it is a year, but I have to have it, cause again, I have sensitive data as well.
Hmm.
Um, so, I just wondered what we use here too?
For the individual PC machines, there is no, we have no backup process or software. We do back up the server to Nordic Backup, which is much like Carbonite, um it's a cloud-based um thing, but it only backs up the server, which the server is virtually not utilized at all. So, individual backup machines like Kelly's machine or Carol Lee's machines are not, are not backed up.
And that's the point, if I might, just of the fifty-three hundred, whatever we had set aside for Rudder to go through
Project is.
Uh, and set that server up, so it can in fact operate as a true server for the various workstations.
And what about the, I'm sorry, if I may, should I, what about the sewer department, do they, are they, they're not included in that, they have their own separate?
The project that's in place is just for Town Hall.
So, Kent, there are some things that you, yes, I agree with you, but for now, there are other, um, I've used other, um, I store everything, like all my documents now in um Dropbox, but again, that's cloud-based and, so there are some other ways to just, at least from your computer, if your data is compromised or it's it's out there somewhere.
Better look at the software too, I mean, it sounds like the software they're using, based on what was written in here, isn't compatible with using data from a cloud drive, it's gotta be a local drive because it's a proprietary data form.
But I think the most critical thing is about people's records at the moment, not just, you know, documents are nice, but.
And we do have, I mean, as they mentioned in the audit letter, we are more prone to catastrophic events, I mean, since I've been there seventeen years, we've had two that were cataclysmic. A soot in a water, we got both sides of the spectrum going on.
Right, so I think that's probably more what he's talking about, and again, like to Cam's thing, it's something really, sometimes a safe isn't gonna really help that, so if somebody blew it up.
Well, that's why, I mean, the the safe, I don't know if the soot would have, the soot?
Kent, not to cut you off.
Sure.
I I don't wanna get off balance here, we have other priorities that need to take place besides your storage facility, how you're gonna back up your tapes, and where you're gonna back them up, under the cloud or not, that's something that we are gonna look forward towards the future, we we definitely look at that. But I think we have other priorities that need to take place, can you discuss quickly about moving potentially one of your staff members up here to collect sewer benefit funds and all that stuff, if that's possible?
Um, well, I really just heard of that today. Um, I mean, I know there's been talk of collecting sewer receipts up here, but I thought it was going to be that, you know, the collector would just collect them, I didn't know it was actually gonna be physically moving um secretary or the assistant secretary part-time up here. Um, that's two very different things.
However, it's gonna work for you.
What's that?
However, it's gonna work between your sewer commissioners and I know.
And it'd obviously be a million details, and I already started making notes about some of them, because, I mean, they're the first line of um response, not just for collections, but for, you know, general sewer questions, I pass out applications, answer zillions of phones from realtors for, you know, last um final readings and this kind of stuff. And not that they couldn't do some of that stuff up here, but um I, the notes I made show to me that, you know, it would get complicated really quickly because we have a lot of physical records down there, um like tie card books. You know, how deep's my sewer lateral service, where is it? And, I mean, we have volumes after volumes of these, I don't think we copy them all, whatever. But I I'd be really concerned about the break in communication, because now it's just a matter of getting up, walking through one door, through the next door, and can, here's a question I can't answer, the person's standing right there, if they were up here, um, you, what are you gonna do, say, wow, you know, you really need to get on the wastewater treatment plant? Or, I I can break my day up to pack up and come up here, you set an appointment, I don't know.
I think it's only for the money, it's only for the collections of the bill, payments.
But how would they be here collecting money and address all the other things that are required as part of their job too, that's?
Well, no, I mean, you would still have a person in your office.
Oh, I thought you were talking about moving somebody up here.
No, just the cash. Just the cash.
Yeah.
Obviously, you know, I mean, however it's best suited for your organization, I mean, uh if if the treasurer collective is able to just manage the cash flow and uh and that piece of it, and they don't need any of your staff members to to moonlight and to do whatever, come up here and do whatever, that's that's up to the finance team to make that determination.
That's what I've been thinking all along, that that's what was gonna be proposed.
Would um, would the treasurer collective be able to handle the sewer monies coming in, I mean, cause when they get it down the, at the sewer department, she collects it in a bag and she brings it up to you anyways, at the end of the day or the end of the week, or however she brings it up, correct?
No, they just make their own deposits.
They do their own deposits, they don't bring it up here.
So, we don't have any cross-check on how much money they actually received, other than the deposit hitting the bank?
Correct.
So, it, on your end in the sewer department, do you have any any verification of what money is coming in, I mean, if somebody comes in with a hundred dollar bill and pays it, uh how do you ensure that that process actually takes place if you're collecting it and depositing it correctly?
Um.
Will they generate this sewer?
Yeah, I wouldn't know exactly how to, the people get a receipt, could someone take the hundred dollars and abscond with it? I mean, we've gone through a lot of different machinations of this system. Um, you had to be bonded, and you gotta change the command up here, you don't have to be bonded. Um, when Carol is out, before we had Rose, or when they're both out, then I I collect, sometimes other people collect. And it it's such a crapshoot as to what the policy of the day is, honestly, over the last seventeen years, um or at least since we've been taking our own collections in, that, I mean, I just have to move forward with my job, so I said that personally, for me, I take the payments, because I'm not gonna turn anybody away who comes through that door and wants to make payment. Um, and then what I do, we have Dropbox outside the gate, we have a Dropbox right inside the main entrance. And as soon as I take the people's money, I write them a receipt and everything else, I fold over the paperwork, over the bills, I put two paper clips on it, I walk out the door and I stick it in the Dropbox. And I said, if there's ever any question about it, you know, like, well, we come up short a hundred bucks, tell me what it is, I'll pay it, and after that, I won't take cash. You know, and it's worked out really well. Um, is there room for a system of checks and balances?
What the auditor is looking for is, is not saying that fraud is going to take place, but the issue is, is that when it becomes a material weakness, is that the auditor says to himself, okay, maybe you collected a, and we're keeping the numbers small, a hundred dollars, right, you collect a hundred dollars. That money needs to hit our books, we need to make sure that it it's accounted for in your enterprise fund, saying that it is accounted for properly. When those cash hits the bank, those numbers need to match what you have recorded. So, when somebody is just depositing it on their own, and it's not coming through Town Hall, it's not funneling up for the collections, the issue becomes, you know, how is it, are we properly accounting for all this money coming in? And do you reconcile every single month?
Yes.
And then your reconciliation matches with with the account?
We don't know, I mean, that's what we discussed earlier, that we'll start doing that now.
That's what we're, that's what, that's what we're talking about.
We, I mean, we keep track of it to the penny.
Understood, yeah.
Yeah, on a, you know, maybe not daily, but.
We're not saying, yeah, we're not saying that fraud is happening.
No, I know, I'm not taking this in an offensive way at all, I'm just saying that, a lot of the things that are brought up as issues here, we're already doing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I I think overall, the management letter and the items that were brought up of concern with the sewer department are actually very small, and and I and I take that as a compliment to the operation that we run. Is there always room for improvement, there most definitely is.
Like I said, these are all recommendations, these aren't anything that's really severe, they're not material weaknesses. That's why he made it as a best practice suggestion that we do this, so that we can um mitigate the risk in the future, in case an issue does come up.
Sure, and I, I mean, I always look, it doesn't have to be severe, somebody doesn't have to thump me for me to look for ways to improve, I'm always looking for ways to improve, cause I sleep better at night knowing that I operate that way.
We do too.
But, you know, the the point you made about, say somebody came in, they gave me um a hundred dollars, and then I was short money, whatever, I wanted to get some beer that night, so I only deposited eighty dollars, well, no, just safe. I I find a way to deposit eighty dollars and swindle twenty dollars, basically. That can happen, what would be different up here?
Well, up here is, well, so you would, you would do the reconciliation yourself, right? So, up here is, we're verifying the cash that is deposited, so if you have a monthly reconciliation, you're off by twenty dollars, you can't find it. Okay, that's the, that you you can come up with that, that's why this is a best practice suggestion, because say your accounting department goes to hell, right? Then we wouldn't be able to double check your work, and so, like I said, this is a to-do, like as a best practice, so that in the future, in case this does happen, we can take care of it before it.
I guess I'm just lost on the advantage of, I I think that it's gonna come down to, there has to be an advantage to changing the system. And I can see from our conversation that there will be advantages, but whether the advantages entail actually changing where the money's collected, I don't know if you're advocating that, or just instead of taking the money, say, we could continue taking the money at the sewer wastewater treatment plant, and then instead of bringing it to the bank, we bring it up here, or do we, do we just do what we've been doing, but we reconcile on a more regular basis?
As long as it's reconciled each month.
I I think it would be nice not to have, um, there's too much risk for, here's money here, now I'm bringing it over there, then I'm, then I'm reconciling it over here, and I think it would be nice for people, at least for their bills and the collecting, everybody comes to Town Hall. It's one central location where we're, and the and the auditor since two thousand and nine has been saying that, you know, to try to, just the collections piece of it, because a million other things um that go on down there, and they can just, and we have the proper verifications, we can reconcile quicker, we can, believe me, we need to cinch up some practices up here too, so, you know, not to say that you, I don't, I don't know how the staffing would work, you know, um, and I think that we should look at that too, but it's still just one location, all payments come in, all money comes in, all, I mean, you used to be able to do it with the light and water department, and then years ago, um that got separated, but at this point, I mean, lots of people have said to me, oh, I prefer to come to Town Hall, but we're not, you know, we're not at that point, but we're, it might just be a recommendation, but it's been a recommendation for more than one year, every, every management letter that I looked at um here. So, it is something I think that we need to look at a little bit more seriously.
Sure.
So, I mean, if you guys can, if you guys are talking about that, and then we, I mean, I just think it would be nice to have it all come to um one place, and we have our own Dropbox here, and everybody, you know, they don't have to come down to the sewer treatment plant, except for stuff like how big is my water line, how, and stuff that needs to be done for you, and a million things that I don't even know anything about it, but at least all the billing and collecting would be done in one location, just like, and then it would just be at the, in the what?
The billing too, you said billing and collecting.
I mean, collecting, anyway, but I mean, how does the billing get to, I I mean, I don't, the billing goes through.
Well, the billing would have to be done here in the VADAR system, so the bills would go out from here, because then we would have to have something to apply the payments to.
Right.
That's that's kind of a mechanical thing, and we would generate the bills, I think, and give, give you the information anyways, or whatever way it works.
Yeah, we'd have to figure that out.
Yeah, it would have to all be in one system, that's right.
It's it's actually fairly straightforward, whatever billing system they use, that electronic file goes to, whether they're gonna use someone to uh print them, or they're gonna do them in-house, a copy of that electronic file comes up here, either electronically, thumb drive, um disk, whatever, gets loaded on our system. As people pay it, we can reconcile the receivables as they come through.
Understood.
We collect the cash, we deposit it in their account. It's actually very easy to do.
Now, can you say the last part again? Deposit where?
We deposit the cash into an account in their name.
That's right, okay.
Uh, and then, uh, you know, we work out the indirect costs of them paying us to do that. What that allows uh us to do is often to do it more economically than they can do it, and it allows us to support uh a little bit of added staff, usually you don't have to add a whole person, uh you don't even often have to add a half person, because uh, you know, for all your work efforts, y'all know, you work on something, and sometimes you can do twice for only about twenty-five percent more effort. It's just that cumulative, so with that cost recovery, it gives us additional dollars to help support the finance team.
Kent, do you, I mean, again, we are not, this is best practices, this is, this is just something where we can definitely, I mean, again, we're all on the same, we're all on the same team.
Well, I I talked it over with the chairman of my board today, and he said, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, I mean, partly because he's a politician, um, which is what he, what he does, but I'm the nuts and bolts guy, and I told him, you know, we talked about it a little bit, and uh I said, just there's myriad details that have to be worked out. Um, that being said, there's no one at the sewer department that I'm aware of who isn't amenable to not only talking this out, but working in that direction.
Sure.
It just has to be, you know, I mean, we don't need to beat a dead horse, but there needs to be a financial team up here that's set, I mean, you've got one part of the puzzle here. Um, there's some other parts of the puzzle that need to be put in place and proven. Um, because we've worked really hard to get a system down there uh that that works, I mean, I think the management letter proves that. And if we're going to um alter that in any way, there needs to be a high level of confidence associated with with any change. And we can work together to to achieve that, I mean, I think we'd like to do that, I mean, we're we're separate from the town in some ways, but we're part of the town in many, many more ways than we're separate, and we've always understood that, but there's always been a struggle because of, um, you know, the the financial issues that the town's had, that we, you know, I, as a manager, have had to pull back, just to protect the interests that I'm fully vested in.
Understood.
You know, but I'm interested in the town as a whole too, so, I mean, if it's something that facilitates town operations in a broader sense, and it helps us too, maybe alleviates some of our workload, and that's great, cause we've got plenty to do.
All right, well, just put your questions together and continuously work with the finance team, you know, on a day-to-day basis with the uh with the TA, and you know, come up with some, a good plan of action going forward.
Okay, definitely.
All right, what's, we're gonna move on, were there, were there other things, Carter, that we talked about today, specifically the uh the uh the important things for, at least for the audit for seventeen, things that we should get done now, uh paperwork-wise, maybe some policies in place or something? That we said in the management letter that we, the town's been working on, so if we've been working on things, I wanna make sure those things that we've been working on are completed uh at least before the seventeen audit's done, uh that way, that would be a a good light for us to say things have been completed and we are working in the right direction.
Um, however you wanna proceed through this, we've got Carol Lee here still with a few items, then we can get her on her way, then we can start right at the beginning and walk through whatever the board wants to do here.
Okay.
I think we should let Carol Lee do her thing, so that she can.
Yep. Okay, Caroline.
Okay, um, we're looking at page thirty.
Yep.
Item fourteen under the tax title processing, being behind.
Mm-hmm.
We have brought it up to date, the fourteens, fiscal fourteens were done in November, we put twelve accounts into tax title. Uh fiscal fifteens have been done, they were done in March of seventeen, we put eighteen accounts into tax title. Fifteens are set to be taken on five twenty-three, and right now, I've got twenty-six accounts, we'll be like, we're gonna go.
Okay.
Going forward, fiscal seventeen, um, once the year ends in the fall, we will start to get the paperwork together, um, send out our delinquency letters. And then hopefully by October, November, begin the taking process.
How many um accounts do you anticipate, like, do you have any idea of where that might be?
For fiscal seventeen?
Yeah.
Um.
An approximate? Cause it's gonna twelve, eighteen, twenty-six, do you think it's gonna be more than that?
It'll probably, yes, it will definitely be more than that.
Okay.
Yeah.
It says here that, um, you know, John, about, given the cash flow issues the town is confronted with, we suggest the town consider another assignment.
Given the cash flow issues the town is confronted with, we suggest the town consider another assignment of its taxes.
Um, that's something we have discussed. Um, it was very successful the last time we did it with Talage.
With Talage, right.
And hopefully we can do that again.
Okay, so I just made a note to myself that, um, isn't part of the problem is that we didn't have, we didn't add funds to do, um, the tax takings and all of that?
Well, there's.
So that we need to really be, um, conscientious about that part is, um, extremely important in helping to bring in some past, um, revenues. So I just put a note to just make sure that we add maybe a little bit more money each year.
Well, we have.
And all of, I know we did this year, but to, to make sure that we don't, yeah.
We, we have, and there's, there's a couple of pieces to this. The first is, uh, that calendar that we've talked about. And poor Carol Lee, I've been beating this into her. You need to do the same thing, the same way, at the same time, every year.
Every year.
Uh, and, um.
We talked about the Mass Municipal Calendar.
Something like that, you know. Every department, you know, should have a departmental calendar of what they do when they do it.
Yeah, you should have their calendar. I wrote that down.
Um, so, uh, I think that, you know, uh, you'll be on track having completed twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, all in this past year. You'll now be on track, uh, this fall to do seventeen and then hopefully stay on track.
Yeah, you'll be able to stay on.
Um, and let me just speak to that, uh, goes to a couple of things is you need to have those resources. Which means although it would take time to work through, having you collect the sewer collection but being paid to do it. It would take some time to work through a lockbox. These are things that can provide you resources at no real cost to the general fund. Um, and the time that you save generally, you don't end up cutting off the, the schedule. You end up then doing all these other things, uh, you know, some of which are material weaknesses, some of which are best practices. Um, so the lockbox is something we should definitely look at. With respect to, uh, the, the assignment of its taxes. Um, Talage has already been through the list once. Uh, and we're going to take a good look at, uh, lands of low value, which we think would clear, conceivably could clear as many as half the parcels off. Uh, so once we've got that segregated and she's completed sixteen, uh, we will look at those parcels where we are comfortable. The, uh, taking process had been perfected. One of the problems is on a American tissue, uh, there was some problems with the data that was brought into VEDAR. Uh, we've gotta go back and rebuild that from scratch. So you're probably gonna have, uh, I think we talked about thirty-five plus or minus parcels that may be new parcels, fresh parcels. And we can send that list to Talage and see if it's interested.
Okay.
Uh, but it's not taking the whole list back to them all over again. They've been through it, it's not perfected. Uh, but certainly we can take these thirty-five plus or minus parcels to them to look at.
Carol Lee to talk about?
Uh, the other issue was, um, number fifteen.
Yep.
Um, referring to myself in the assessment's office not doing, um, reconciliations of total commitments. We have always done a verbal check. Um, what we're gonna start doing now with every commitment. Luanne is gonna bring her total commitment over to me. I will sign off on it. When I have my paperwork done, I'll bring it over to her and have that signed off on too. We'll have a, basically a checklist and we'll both sign it every commitment throughout the year.
And only when they match do the tax bills get put in the envelopes.
Right.
And mailed out.
Right.
Conceivably, you could send out a mailing of, of billing that doesn't match your commitment.
I, obviously that policy's gonna be drafted on that, so they understand how that's gonna play out.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just like this year on the excise, um, we had, um, one of the excises.
One oddball account.
But it was like twelve thousand something. Well, our billing doesn't go five digits. So we couldn't figure out why the difference was because it was twelve thousand dollars. So it had dropped one of the digits, you know.
One of the zeros.
So it took a while to figure that out that, you know, cause we've never had an excise tax bill that high, so.
Wow, okay.
And if you don't reconcile those, the bills go out and then payments start coming in, questions start coming in. It doesn't match the commitment. It is, as I think everyone's learned, easier to spend a little more time and a little more money doing it right up front
It's a nightmare.
than trying to unravel it afterwards.
Now, that's what I have in, um, twenty-fourteen, the personal property. That's what I have because the tax rate was set so late in the season. They, you know, when people that had come in and paid, thank goodness the real estate tax worked correctly, but the personal property didn't. So pretty much all of those payments that were made before, we're having to manually go through and look at each one of those as to what needs to happen. Did people overpay? Did they not? It didn't calculate all that correctly, so.
Yeah, the voluntary payments are great for the cash flow, but they're a nightmare on the paperwork.
They don't work right, yeah.
Oh, that's right. We had asked for people to come in and.
And that was, yeah.
Yep, now I remember that.
But that reconciliation between you and the auditor, you know, signing off on each side, I think that, that's a good step in the right direction.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So good checks and balance.
That, that will help avoid.
Absolutely.
Commissions.
All right.
Those were the three major issues for the collector at this point.
Well, if I could address number thirteen?
Sure.
A number of security issues exist which we have discussed with the treasurer, but these are better discussed in an executive session. And will we be having one of those?
Uh, we, we potentially will, specifically concerning the safety and well-being of the pe, building, yes.
And when would that happen?
Um, that's a great question. I'm not sure yet.
If it's already been discussed, I'm not really sure why.
No, it has been discussed.
These are better just, it's.
Better, better discussed.
Nobody would write something in an audit report and not have it, have it been discussed or on paper. It's just not for public.
I think, I think the audit company was talking about some safety measures and security measures for the treasurer collector's office.
Something that was put together for us.
The most immediate issues.
I just wanted to know when we were going to address that.
Whenever we want. I mean, we, we know what we need to do to address.
I would say to table that for now. I mean, it's.
The, the two most immediate issues which we would do when we move their offices.
This is just something we, we really, um. Best security practices are not, you know, public knowledge at this point.
Yeah.
Not that, not, not that public should not know what we're trying to accomplish yet. And that, that, the basic accomplishment is keeping everybody safe, keeping the finances safe.
If you wanna hold that at the end, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, why can't we have on Monday night at our regular meeting?
Yeah.
A session so that we can, so that all of us know, so there's not one person at the table that knows what the issues are. That's not the way a board works.
No, I, I don't know what the issues are.
Well, I'm just like, yeah, I'm just assuming.
Oh, it just made it seem like it was, it was already done and that not to do it in public, but to have an executive session.
I'm just assuming that. No.
No, that's, that's the thing, the open disclosure of what it is.
I'm, I'm frankly not sure it needs to be done in executive session. But we can do it Monday night. I, I know what the, I know what the two most immediate issues are.
I don't think so.
They are physical. We, um, will address those when we move, uh, the offices.
Okay. Okay.
That is a concern.
Yeah. Yes, I don't know, Doug, I don't. I, I just read the financial letter. I just read the, the same thing.
Or if we have time tonight, Doug, we can do it at the end of the.
Pardon me, since it said to do it in an executive session.
Well, it's like saying, you know, it's like saying, you know, I leave my back door unlocked. You don't wanna open that. You don't wanna say that publicly, so that's why we'll hold an executive session.
I left my keys in my truck.
Yeah, you don't wanna say that publicly.
You just don't wanna say that publicly.
I agree, but, you know, let's just schedule it for Monday. Why wait?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And let's talk about it three months from now. And if it's an issue.
No, I don't wanna.
That's been recognized here.
Thanks, Carol Lee.
Thank you, Carol Lee. No, you're right.
And we can't have an executive session today. It wasn't anywhere near on the agenda. It's a workshop, not a.
But we can, uh.
Monday's, or whenever, you, whenever.
Sounds good.
We don't set the agenda, so, just asking. Those are notes I made to myself, so.
Yep, absolutely. I made the same notes.
So with that, if you wanna go back to nine, I think we can walk through it fairly quickly. That would be my suggestion.
Page nine?
And I think that Cameron said he started to develop a little bit of a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just created a foundation so we can have some sort of structure to discuss these, so, um, and we can walk through this real quickly. So generally sum up this, the budget management, the, the key issue here is that deficits, deficit spending is taking place. And the causes of this, uh, as highlighted, were a lack of budget monitoring, insufficient process to produce accurate data to monitor departmental budgets on a monthly basis. So that's saying that we don't really know, you know, what the fire department's spending until it actually, you know, happens. Three months down the road, they're out of funds type deal. It needs to happen on a monthly basis. And the budgets do not tie to the general ledger was another finding. Now, as you can see, twenty-sixteen's fantastic. Kelly, you're doing an excellent job. The issue, once again, isn't that it's Kelly doing something wrong. It's that if Kelly was removed from the situation, that this can happen again.
Kelly couldn't have saved you from the boneheaded stunt you did.
That's, that's it. So.
That's right.
You converted, you bought a new software package.
Middle of the year.
And you converted in the middle of the year. And that conversion, um, no disrespect to her skills, was a disaster.
Yep. So that's also another cause.
And it left you, and it left you with no real clue of where you were. And so everybody went skipping along, spending.
And we had talked about earlier that every department should have a spreadsheet to keep their tally. Um, and while they, every department may have that today, should we consider having a standardized document?
Yes, absolutely.
So every department is doing their reconciliation the same way, with the same document, you know, in the same manner.
It's the same.
Well, and this year would be the opportune time to do that because of the new GL setup of the new accounts.
Now, my question to you is, um, so on a monthly schedule, we're talking about reconciling them to what you have, and you already do this currently, right?
Right, they, well, it's their responsibility. I mean, I send.
So they're reconciling their items, but they also submit something to you to double check that it matches with the GL?
No, no. No. They, when I send the budget versus actual, I'm telling them this is what I have. When they look at their spreadsheet, if it doesn't balance, they're to notify me that, okay, I, I have a discrepancy we need. And I send them the detailed report of all the transactions. They're able to then go down their spreadsheet, verify what they have. And usually between that, we find either they forgot to put in a bill that they had paid, or when the payables were entered, maybe we missed a number in the data entry of paying that bill.
So nobody's signing off and returning these to us at any, at any.
That's what I want.
So.
So there's, there's no, the, you know, the vendor warrant is what the department submits. So they submit their, their vouchers every week. And every time they submit a voucher, that's what they should be putting in their spreadsheet.
So they should.
And at the end of the month, Kelly sends them, all right, this is what we paid out of the general ledger. Does that match with what you have? So if the department forgets, they put something on their voucher and they forget to put it in the spreadsheet, that'll generate a discrepancy.
Well, my, my key issue is just people not doing it. It's not that, you know, the issue of something, a reconciliation doesn't come up. But if I say, you know, here's what your budget should be, and you go, okay, yeah, and just don't do anything, so.
Right, we should have some kind of.
There needs to be some sort of sign-off from the department head that returns back to maybe Carter's office, like he's alerted that something's reconciled.
Something. That's simple.
And it took over a year. I mean, it took over a year to get to the departments where they realized, oh, we need to. Because they would get the budget versus actual and it was the same as going to the teller. How much money do I have in my account? And they would just take it, you know, and that's how it was working, you know. And it was like, no, this is your double check. So that took a while. And we've only got two departments that really have issues with that at this point.
Right, so we really need a policy that says that departments have to reconcile against the budget versus actual monthly.
I think it's. They should decide enough that they.
And provide either, we either have a form that they send in or an email that says, we've done this, I have discrepancies, I don't have discrepancies.
Well, if we had the.
That's an excellent idea.
If we had the tabs, if we did a spreadsheet with the tabs for all their accounts, and we had a front sheet that was like a cover sheet that rolled each tab, so as they did each month, it would roll the numbers and they could print that cover page of their Excel spreadsheet.
And then just send it back via email. Nobody needs to come here. We just need to know that it's being done.
Yeah, via email, just coming directly from them so that we can see that it's done.
Right.
Right.
And, um, the, the thing is, is the follow-up on, um, making sure that those accounts are done. So that would have to be something that's included on the monthly checklist, either for the TA or the accountant saying, yeah, I verified that the budget to actual was.
Right, yeah. And that would be, that would be part of my job to do that, yeah.
Okay. And that wouldn't be too, too overbearing for what you're currently, okay. Cause that's the other thing we gotta keep in mind here is the actual.
We don't wanna.
I have to say, in forty years, I've never seen it done this way.
No?
If the department head screws up their budget, hold them responsible for it. The idea that you're gonna have Kelly send out her monthly and then you're gonna wait for some sort of form or checkoff to come from the twelve or fifteen or twenty departments, and then she has to check and track to make sure that she got all those back. I, I gotta tell you, it's just, it sounds like.
What would your recommendation be for matching the budget to act? Cause I think in the actual, um.
That's the department's responsibility to live within their budget, Kim.
Unfortunately though, that, that's a lovely concept and I think that, you know, it, it's being done better. But he, you know, why do we wanna wait until something astronomical happens? You know, what if there's a mistake? What if there's a? I'm not, I don't, I don't think that it should be unruly either, that you have like all this, you know, signing off. And I think that we should have, um, something, some kind of other control in place. And yes, they're responsible and what, what, what is the accountability? We don't have a policy for that. You're fired, end of story, no questions asked. But we don't have that at the moment, so why wouldn't we, you know, Kelly, mine doesn't look right. So obviously some people are looking at it, but it's just a matter of got it, looked at it. You know, I mean, we have to do something. That's why I feel.
My concern, Carter, is you said you gotta hold the department accountable. Now, when we're talking, when we're talking about, say, I don't know, and we'll just pick one at random, say the DPW. Say they, they spent all their money in the first month, right? What is, what is holding them accountable entail? I mean, are we just firing the department head right off the bat? I mean, what, that's my question and concern, is say somebody doesn't do these reconciliations and they're overspent well beyond the reasonable measure in three months.
Well, what I, what I do when we sit, Kelly and I sit around the tenth of the month, is I go right down it of, what is, what's the percentage spend? What's the burn rate? And if something doesn't look right, I ask her to check with the department to find out why isn't that right, okay? She gets that answer. And that's the memo, uh, that you get as the quarterly report. She tries to explain to you ahead of time, uh, okay, uh, this account is at seventy-five percent burnt three months in. Uh, because it happened to have the entire prepayment, uh, for, um, workers' comp or, or software, some kind of thing.
Software.
So on a month-by-month basis, we are looking at those things. My concern, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
My, my concern here is that if you ramp it up, and yes, each department should be keeping track, not only of where they're at, but of what they have, um, if they've made a major buy. So for instance, the invoice may not have come in yet. They should be setting that in there, knowing that, ooh, I just ordered a thousand tons of salt at, um, seventy-two bucks a ton. Uh, so, uh, I, I really don't have any money left in the account. I just would hate to see you set up an additional system that takes more time than you have benefit.
Would it be more beneficial to do a quarterly sign-off then, to, if we did it on a quarter? So if you're doing this monthly and you kinda notify them, you know, do some follow-up on your end, maybe on a quarterly process or even a semi-annual before the, once a year where they, they kinda see where they're at and spend.
Why don't you let, why don't you let me, uh, talk with the staff about it Tuesday morning? And see, and they can propose something that would meet your concerns.
Okay.
Without creating too much work for them. But frankly, I'm more concerned about adding burden, uh, on the finance team.
But the discrepancies too, I mean, I don't know how much, I mean, I'm sure it's been corrected a lot now that Kelly's here. But in the past, we've had significant issues where things, when they got coded in the AP, were just charged to the wrong account. So now, you know, a department head has accounted for it in their system or whatever, but now their account is still wrong because the AP system charged other department's bills to their account.
And that's why she sends out that detailed.
So again, that's why you.
Yeah, and that's when I get.
But only when they ask for a discrepancy. But now if we're saying, well, we're not gonna ask them if there's discrepancies.
Correct, they have to ask for it.
We can send that in a quarter.
But I ask that every, to, every month when we send it out. That's, I mean, that's part of the, if you have any questions, concerns, you need to let me know.
Okay.
Um, and again, that's just been, I mean, to me, I think that needs to be a policy put in place because it's just been an understanding that when you get the budget versus actual, you're supposed to compare this to what the department head has. You know, if there's any, you know, if you don't balance, you need to notify the accountant, you know, for a detailed list of expenditures or whatever. You know, so that there's, is something in place. So let's say six months down the road, there's a big issue. You know, well, have you been checking this every month? This is the policy. This is what you're supposed to be doing.
Okay.
Um.
And, and you're right, the first line of defense when something isn't right in a department, often is it got posted to the wrong account.
And in the past, that was a, that was an issue.
And, and so in one community, we did send out the detailed, the itemized spend report quarterly, and we, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
We'll, we'll bring you something back that, that tries to meet your concerns.
I tell you, that policy on budget versus actual thing, it sounds really good too.
Well, we're responsible for signing all the ones.
Yes, we are.
Do you look at them all?
I look at most of them, yeah.
Every page?
Not every page.
He looks at all of them, alright, that's what she's supposed to say.
I look at all of them.
Yeah, that's what you're supposed to say.
I'd look at every single one of them.
However, I do.
Oh, God. Every single one.
So what I'm saying is, how many errors have I caught?
You're sticking me under the table right now.
Many, many.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, we should have a, we should have a budget. It's our responsibility to sign off on those, is that not our job? So all I'm saying is, maybe it doesn't have to go, you know, to that level, but we get a whole cover sheet that says what department, exactly what bills, and then, you know, the things that haven't looked right, it has gotten posted to the wrong account, or I wondered why they were spending like all that, like right now, or it's not my job to ask, it's my job to ask Kelly, so I don't, you know, sometimes I don't sign off on them until I get those answers. So I'm just saying that that is another check, because that's part of our responsibility.
You're right.
Shouldn't be signing stuff that we don't know where the funding source is, or we don't know. So there is another check in balance, it's us.
Carter, in your professional experience, um, is that typically how a municipality operates to check budgets? Is that the accountant is reconciling, sending out the actual budget? How have you seen this done in other towns where they're to ensure that deficit spending is mitigated?
The, um, communities that I've worked in, the six or so, uh, we send out, uh, at the end of each month, well, let me back up. The revenue and expense report is reviewed between the TA and the accountant.
Mm-hmm.
And all of those reports have a, a burn rate, how much, um, they have expended out of that account. And I'll usually circle, this doesn't seem right, ask about this one, find out what's going on with this one. Uh, she then, um, generally reaches out to those individual departments and says, hey, we're one month in and you've spent seventy-eight percent. Sometimes we will know exactly what it is based upon our own experience. And she waits for the department head to get back to them, and then the, uh, report goes out to all of the department heads. Uh, quarterly, um, in most communities I've worked in, we then send out the, uh, detailed report. Uh, for the most part, uh, and then in that quarterly report, we highlight those for you. Uh, because, um, you know, she'll say, uh, you'll notice in, um, this account there at seventy-eight, here's why. We try to give you that explanation.
Okay.
Uh, you'll notice for sixteen, there were no deficits.
Mm-hmm.
For seventeen, I dare say there will be no deficits. The, the system, the, the system is working. I think it needs to be tightened up a little bit
Mm-hmm.
and, and codified and formalized.
Okay.
And we can talk with the department heads. Um, she's still got, as she says, one or two departments that are, um,
Because I think.
Not as conscientious.
Your method, uh, I mean, it mitigates all the risks that are potential, is that as long as there's follow up on it, but lack of policy and procedure is key. So the department heads need to have that sort of structure, so. I made note, and I'll pass this out after this meeting, uh, the Excel sheet and kind of the notes that I've been taking, so.
I, I think it works with a minimum of, of added work.
Yes.
Okay.
But let us see what we can add to it, uh, that can help you all be a, a bit more comfortable.
Okay.
All right, um, so that, that, any other questions on that one? All right, ready to, so general fund overdraft?
I can answer that one right off the bat.
I'm sorry, I didn't even know like what pa- page you're on.
Oh, that's, that's eleven.
I'm, I'm.
I'm just following the, the bit, the bolded, uh,
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the underlines.
Okay.
Um, I can answer that as of right now.
Okay.
Um, today, I started working with Carol Lee, and Fidelity is all set. We have closed the accounts that need to be closed and moved to Webster account. Um, we set up the sewer betterment account, the Title V account, all the restricted accounts. Um, have reconciled to the GL, the community preservation account, the, um, sewer department. So all of the accounts right now, as they stand at Fidelity, they're in line with the, uh, general ledger.
So everything's one hundred percent reconciled.
Reconciled to that point. Um, we need to work, um, tomorrow, our goal is to work with Webster Bank. We have to talk with them and get, um, because four of the accounts that were closed at Fidelity really should be at Webster Bank. So we'll get those moved, um, tomorrow. So we're, we're moving toward this purpose where this isn't gonna happen again.
Okay.
Um, and then the next, next day would be Unibank. So we've got those three banks we need to work with. But Fidelity, today, we got all set.
Okay, so, um, just following through with it, uh, so that, with the reconciliations, uh, that takes care of, you know, low cash reserve spending from improper accounts and cash flows never prepared. We had talked about that. Cash flows, we can't really do the, uh, forecasted cash flows until we have some data.
Right.
Uh, the bank reconciliations have been taken care of, and that should be codified in a, you know, some sort of monthly thing for the treasurer. Uh, it, yeah, this is all taking place at the treasurer level. That's something that needs to be followed up in the policy and procedure.
Well, there's, there's treasurer and there's, um, accountant, and so, uh, for instance, the, um, uh, the cash is a two signature.
Mm-hmm.
Treasurer does their checkbook, it's reconciled against the GL. Um, I think last month's was within eleven cents.
Yeah, this year, this year, we're off, I think like eleven cents in the cash.
And truthfully, I, if they bounce around under a buck, I, it's not worth the effort looking for it.
No.
Um, then there will be a sheet on the reconciliation of the, uh, receivables. Uh, and then on the, um, cash to the GL.
And so we were looking at.
And at the end of the month, those three things will be on there. I'll sign it.
And that was the, the twenty-fifth that we're talking about typically, around the twenty?
That's, yeah, I'd have to go back and look, but that's, that was our plan, I think. So that's basically gonna have four items on that checklist. One, the revenue and expense have been reviewed. We've reached out to the departments, gotten their answers. Secondly, the checkbook has been reconciled. Third, the cash book has been reconciled against the GL.
Yeah, yeah.
And fourth, the receivables on the collector's books have been reconciled against the receivables.
And that would mitigate all, all the risk. And as long as that's taking place and signed off, I mean, that would take care of it.
And then the TA should sign off on that at the end of the month.
Yep, absolutely.
And then twice a year, um, which is another thing that had never been done here ever, is to reconcile with Jeffrey and Jeffrey what they show for the excise.
Yes, the document.
Have you got any collateral?
That had never been done here.
What?
So I did that this last year, and what we found was the common thing is that we would have our original commitment of excise, and those would go to Jeffrey and Jeffrey. But any additional commitments that we had for that fiscal year, if a payment didn't get made, it's just been sitting on our books. It was never sent, because they never did another sweep of those fiscal years to Jeffrey and Jeffrey. So as of right now, we are totally in reconciliation with them. Cleared up a lot of stuff that we had, plus now we've collected a lot of that that had been sitting there.
Yeah, so, so you had accounts that had been paid, you didn't necessarily know about it, and you had cash sitting in their account waiting to be swept to you that you didn't necessarily know about, and or even if you knew about it, you didn't have the use of it.
And, and what, what, uh, kinda timing are we looking on that? Is that monthly, quarterly?
That'll probably be every six months.
Six, semi-annually, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, yeah. What about reconciling, uh, payroll? Is that done monthly too, or is that weekly?
Um, the payroll is part of their GL accounts with the, uh, budget versus actual.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions on general fund?
Uh, and just to let you know, so for instance, we placed that, uh, ban bid today. Uh, and when those receipts come in, those will be put in a capital account and maintained separately on the GL.
Yes.
Okay.
And they'll have their own.
It'll be in its own checking account.
In its own checking account.
When you go through and you have.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, so it's just an easy reconciliation to GL and cash.
You make, you make the, you make the payment out of the general fund, and then you transfer the monies over.
Yeah.
It'll be on your regular warrant.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then when the reimbursement comes in, it goes in there too.
Um, we got capital planning? No, we got, yeah, I'll pass capital planning to Doug, um, but we have the audit, single audit.
Reimbursement should go into the capital account.
I was gonna say, like, when the money comes, like you.
I'll have to double check on that.
Because you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna pay a hundred, you're gonna pay a hundred cents on a general warrant.
Yeah.
You're going to sweep the hundred cents out of the capital. So the, uh, MSBA reimbursements, I believe, we can check with Tony, should be going in as an income stream into the bond capital account.
Okay, I'll check on that.
But, but, you know, just double check, make sure you're comfortable with that. I think there's only one account left really truly to be closed, the old depository.
All done.
At all.
The vendor and the payroll are closed.
Yeah, okay.
We got all that done today.
By close, you just mean reconcile, right, no?
No, no, it's closing them.
Okay, so you, all the dead stagnant accounts?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's some, some tailings, but they're frankly on a lower priority.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you said you have accounts now in three different banks, or different banks?
Yes.
Are the accounts like specific purposes are in one bank versus a, another?
Yes. Yeah. The, um, all of the pretty much active accounts that we use quite often, the sewer department, the, the water department, um, most of the town depositories, those types are at Fidelity. The Webster Bank is where all the trust funds are, and the light has three investment accounts there. Um, Unibank, Unibank is the, whenever you go online to pay your bills, you go to Unibank Gold or whatever, that's tied to Unibank. So any accounts that are paid online for the town all have to have a Unibank account. So we have one for the town clerk, um, we have one for our, um, the collector side. And then we have a Unibank account that is for automatic deposits from other sources that come from, like our, um, state aid goes to their, um,
Cherry Sheet USDA.
Cherry Sheet stuff. Um, we get, like, the, if the police do a, uh, a detail for Verizon, that's how Verizon pays us through Unibank. Um, so it's basically like a depository account at Unibank that we don't really, I mean, we just pull money from that that we need to do.
It's really a clearing account.
Clearing account for in and out stuff.
Okay, just all online transactions.
Well, and the light department uses Century for their credit cards. They have two accounts, one for light and one for water. That's where they run their credit card, for their credit card machine through.
So as you set up these new accounts, when capital projects and stuff start, that'll all go in the fidelity?
Fidelity, yeah, because that's where, that's where our main movement comes from. Yeah. And we're setting up a general fund account at the Webster account, so when we do have activity for the trusts, we can just move the money there at that bank and not have to move it back over to Fidelity. So there'll be a, a general fund line item there that we can, you know, move money as we need to, to cover the trust accounts.
My question is, with, with moving funds from one bank account to another bank account, how does that process take place and who has?
Um, the treasurer does that, and it's when we do the warrant. Um, you'll have the, you'll see the cover page that you have, that's the summary page. You'll see like the light department. So we would transfer from the light department to the, um, depository.
Okay.
Um, currently how the treasurer has been doing it, I'm s- keep, you know, working with Carol Lee, we're keeping it the same for this fiscal year. That's not how I would have done it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we're, you know, we've talked about going forward, how that process is gonna work, and, you know, looking at that differently.
Okay, so we're, we're thinking for the next fiscal year will be a, a different process?
Different process, yeah.
So are you, are you keeping notes on this for the procedural thing, so maybe we can put some type of procedural thing in writing?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, as we, as we discuss things and we, you know, because some things, it's like, you know, I've talked with her, and we bounce things off, and now that probably isn't gonna work, you know, we haven't really firmed up anything yet, so.
Okay, okay. Um, that, anybody else for general fund? Any other questions?
Audits?
So then we got the audit, single audit filing deadlines. Um, once again, this isn't something that, uh, is pertinent to twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. However, in twenty thirteen to twenty fifteen, they found issues, um, and it's failure to file a single audit before March twenty-seventh. And then I think if it's another certain threshold, a higher threshold, it's the, the thirtieth of March. Um, and we missed those deadlines, and what happened was, is we actually, the federal government had given us the high-risk audittee, which we lost our chance to apply for CDBG funds, and I'm not sure what that means.
It's the community development.
For instance, this year, um, in March, we, um, the funding for community development block grant, uh, nine hundred thousand, plus or minus, uh, was opened up. And, uh, we were not able to apply.
And that's due to the high-risk audittee?
Because we were so far behind on our audits. Uh, and we asked them for a waiver, which they'd granted two prior years. Uh, and they decided that no, unless the audit was filed by the time the application was gonna be filed, they, they wouldn't. So it'll take us some time to recover their, their trust.
So CDBG funds were used for the back bank?
Okay.
And CDBG funds would have been used over here?
East Templeton.
In East Templeton, and we lost out on it.
That we tried for. We lost. And we, I mean, we both.
So, all right, well, now we understand why this is important, why this is a material.
That cost you an opportunity to apply. I don't wanna tell you it cost you money.
No, it just, we couldn't, we couldn't apply because we didn't know how much it was.
It did cost you an opportunity to apply.
Okay, so, and then the, the reasons for that, he highlights, you know, inconsistent accounting, uh, do the change of accountants and bait our system, uh, and lack of monthly, quarterly, and yearly process, uh, checks. Um, so I, as, Kelly, you're working with the, the monthly, quarterly, and annual deadlines, you've made the deadlines.
Yeah, I'm actually, um, I've got to work with CDBG because we still have some money on the books.
Okay.
Um, I'm off about three thousand dollars that I need to work with Mike to figure that out, because we need to close that out and, you know, give that money back to them.
Okay.
So as soon as I can come up with that three thousand dollar difference, then we'll be, you'll be able to close that out and.
He hasn't who Mike is.
Oh, Pink Pink.
Pink Pink, he's, he's a CDB, he actually works here.
Okay.
No.
Isn't even better.
I've never, I've never had Mike.
He's not here anymore because we don't have any, yeah.
He's not here anymore, but we have any money.
So Cameron probably would have never.
Yes, I'm calling. He said, just call me, I'll come over. I'm like, okay. Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, so then the, when you file the audits, I mean, is there any sort of double check? I mean, is, is Carter on you for filing these audits, or is this all on your responsibility? Is there any sort of?
I think it's both. I mean, it's kind of a joint, you know.
Well, I mean, in, in most places where I've worked, it's really the accountant's burden, um, you know, by, uh, mid-July, uh, they're getting the auditor on their books, they'll be here mid-August, and, you know, the first of September.
Mm-hmm.
But normally the TA is breathing down the accountant's neck of,
Okay.
when are they coming in?
I mean, I've always had them, any other place I've ever worked, by April, I already have my audit time scheduled on the books, they're ready to go. You know, usually I've had the books done by June thirtieth, or July thirtieth, I'm closed out, ready to go. Um, you know, I mean, this has been.
They have the auditors in.
Yeah, and they're in and out, and I've never had a not perfect audit, so this was like a huge issue to me, so I'm looking forward to getting there.
The procedural thing, like with the Schedule A, how things progress.
The only thing you really need to, yeah, the, the thing that you really need to decide if your audit is gonna bounce around a little bit is you're allowed to, uh, take, um, anything that you receive in the thirty, sixty days following the close of the fiscal year and take them back into the prior year, uh, if you need. You don't wanna let that bounce around much. You don't wanna say, well, this year, well,
We're gonna do it.
but we're not doing the audit till the end of August, so we'll take fifty days back in. And the next year, you're able to get the audit done in the first week of August, and so you say, well, we're gonna close the books, so we're only gonna take thirty days. You, you need to sort of make a decision on that and then stick with it, where you can get a little bit of, uh,
There's always, to make a tighter deadline, and then you kinda give yourself a few days leeway, you know, if anything absolutely comes up.
peak and valley at the end of the year. Yeah.
And I think, uh, the thirty day, I mean, if that's, I mean, are you, are you really struggling to get that close, an annual close for thirty days?
To, I have not had that opportunity since I've been here, so I really don't know.
In, in a nor.
Yeah, this is it, four years.
I mean, this is my first time, it'll be clean, so.
Oh, man.
Once, once, Karen, once you are flowing, um, most accountants that I've worked with, within thirty to forty-five days of the end of the fiscal year are ready for the auditors. They've got everything boxed up.
By, by Aug- uh, not, August thirtieth, right?
Yeah.
It should be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I think once you're on a good flow, you'll find that to be true.
All right, that takes care of that, and then I, Doug, I didn't, and I apologize for this, I didn't do anything for capital project management, this is a huge thing, and I, And I I tried to go through this and plow through this, I'm so lost in this, this would be, I don't know if you read through that and if you could offer some insight.
So, you know, they're they're just talking about, again, a number of capital projects that have happened over the last few years. And the way they were mismanaged, I mean, it doesn't surprise me at all that the town has never correctly accounted or booked. Capital projects correctly, um, you know, so I'm glad now that Kelly understands how it's supposed to be done. And we've got things set up as we move forward. You know, the whole two fifty-two project, uh, two fifty-two Baldwin Road project is, um, you know, is one of those things that. You know, it it occurred, we borrowed a bunch of money for it, uh, paid, you know, higher than market value for the the property. You know, wasn't able to sell it at the, um, what we paid for it, once it was determined the project was not feasible. And we now have this shortage that we're gonna have to borrow to cover as a result of that. Elementary school.
Okay, go back to the two fifty-two Baldwin Road, so we have one more payment this year, right? And that's done.
Yep.
So two fifty-two Baldwin Road, we 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 can use it as a learning experience, not to bring it up anymore, okay.
There is one else, if I might, Doug, there is one outstanding issue on two fifty-two, it may be one of your other borrowings. Um, you have by IRS regulation. Eighteen months after the completion of a project to have your funds expanded. Or roll them over into one of the other permitted uses. Now, as we discussed the other day, one of the permitted uses uh, is to actually pay on the debt. The greater of fifty thousand bucks or what you initially borrowed. Fifty thousand is the state limit, three percent is the IRS limit. Or to move them to another project, but you're supposed to have the monies expended. Or in or moved and being expended within eighteen months. Failure to do that is a potential violation of the IRS arbitrage rule. In simplest terms, you're not supposed to borrow money at a tax exempt rate, then park it in the bank and earn interest at a different rate. Now, um, I will work with Mary Carney, uh, we really will need to try to resolve if that's a problem. If there's gonna be anything we need to do to clean that up, I don't think it's gonna be a problem technically because of the um. Low interest rates that you could possibly earn, so the bond was at whatever it was at, three percent, three and a quarter, three and a half. You didn't earn a higher interest rate, so in terms of actual cash, you didn't violate, but there is a violation on timing. And it's something we'll need to.
And what are the repercussions of violating that?
IRS penalties that I don't remember off the top of my head.
Like financial penalties potentially?
Okay.
Yeah.
So when do you think that you'll have answers for that?
Well, I think that once we have resolved the uh, five million dollar bond offering and we've got that completed.
So it all goes hand in hand.
We will put together the package we need to send to the IRS, so I would say within thirty days.
Okay, great.
So, so again, you know, that's, it's all, you know, the mismanagement was all ancient history kind of stuff on that project. Elementary school, you know, is a project that's still moving forward. Um, again, in the early days of the project, it wasn't accounted for correctly, funds weren't first put in proper accounts, they were commingled with other things. Borrowing wasn't done when it needed to be done, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But once again, you know, now that Kelly has a handle on how capital project funding is supposed to be handled, um, and that type of thing. You know, we we shouldn't have a recurrence of any of these issues. Because um, we've now had the um, training from the inspector general on, you know, bidding and contracting. And that's a selectmen's office responsibility. The finance team is up on how that money has to be accounted for, um, and, you know, reconciled. So that shouldn't be an issue in the future. So I think, you know, the elementary school, once we get through this initial borrowing thing and we get that project back, um, you know, in track. You know, it will, it will move forward without any additional issues.
Okay, so it's, generally it's just a lack of know-how was the the major mismanagement, I mean, improper accounting methods, improper training, improper. Compliance, okay.
Correct, yes, same with the seniors in the project.
We we, and also to develop a potential thirty B policy for the time, I know we follow the MASH general law, but to have an internal. Development policy, a procedure as well as, you know, especially contractual things that go to Kelly to make sure that the board of selectmen offices tracking things. As well as Kelly getting the actual contracts and maintaining copies of in your office somehow, some way, shape or form. Some procedural uh, development which would need to take place as well, is am I on track?
Well, I mean, yeah, and like the policy of, you know, when we do have a bidding issue, you know, we should be having a meeting. You know, there should be a meeting with the potential people, you know, sitting down, you know, it's not just, okay, I'm gonna fill this out, I'm gonna send it off. It has to be a meeting of myself, you know, the department that's getting it, whatever the project is. You know, Holly that's doing the paperwork on the bidding, you know, it has to be, we have to get that in place, that it's a step by step. You know, policy and process of how to do a bidding and for the town.
Maybe attach a checklist there as well.
Correct.
I'm working on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I said I was gonna work on that, but we needed to get through town meeting and we need to get through the management letter and we need to, but there are many um, key players. That and a lot of it, I believe, will be done, um, now that we've combined, like buildings and grounds, and so bidding will be done. Not through this office, contracts will probably be done through here, but it depends, and everybody should be coordinating with um, Alan Mayo. But it's like I have the thirty B um, uh, book and then it's like, okay, there's this, there's that, there's. But again, I have to kinda sit down with Carter too and talk about, you know, numbers wise, you know, and all of that, so before it.
What's the high number, what's the low number?
Well, just because of, it says, you know, um, we can lower what this, what the state says that we can do, and I believe that. Me me personally, no, I believe that we should, so, and it doesn't have to be that it's a lot, it's just to cinch it in a little bit tighter, you know. I don't, it's fifty thousand dollars to go out to bid and, uh, no.
For a town of our size.
We, that's too big.
State limits are too high, I believe.
Yes, so what were you, what were you thinking, like twenty?
I I I thought the twenty-five was a good number, you know, for for a town our size and and. You know, like I said, I think that until I can really wrap my head around some of that.
And you and you agree with that? Okay, yeah, good, I mean, that that's, this is good working.
I mean, Carter had talked to me um, about that before too, you know, we kinda have to, you know.
You can add to, you can't take away.
No, we can take away, we can't add, we can't say, oh, well, we are just gonna use fifteen thousand even though it's gender, no, 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 no. We can, we can lower that. We can be stricter, so and I just think that, you know, again, I don't really think it's reinventing the wheel, I think it's just putting together a document that goes with. Like any other piece, you know, I sent Carter a fraud policy today exactly through the state. And that's already there, but I haven't, I just asked him where we would be with, because it was just a piece that I read, so it's, you know, is. Is that the policy is, you know what I'm saying?
The the bad check policy that I got from, did you see that one? I'll send that to you too.
Yeah, thank you.
We got that.
We'll have that for you Monday night.
Yeah, so you don't have, okay.
Okay, cause we do, there are, there are some things moving right now, like Carol Lee's doing a fantastic job, she's really stepping up to her plate.
I I think too, um, and I've said this before, and I know that right, well. The MSBA reimbursements should not be handled by the board of selectmen's office, period. So we only have, um, we have two people trained at the moment, Holly and, but as we move forward. That is not the place to have that done, it's a financial thing, it's a big huge project and how are we going to really, you know, what team? As things like really start to come together.
Things we're gonna talk about tomorrow night.
Committee and the.
Once we get past the the redesign effort, the prequal, I think that's something, and the schools even talked about, maybe they could do that. So I think that is something that we need to work through with the building committee.
Well, tomorrow night when we meet, we're approving bills, so there's still that process being done and it's, you know, again, I just, I've always. We're approving bills tomorrow, so I haven't looked at them, but that's on the agenda.
Where the fudgsicle did they come from?
Hey, you know what, you can call, all I'm saying is that it can't be.
Insured me that there would be no more late invoices.
You know what, we can talk about it tomorrow, all I'm saying is that, once things get up and ramped, if we have to go out to do bids again, they're gonna want to be paid. They're not gonna wait until November to be paid, so we still have a process to get through that I think that needs to be, you know, that gap needs to be closed.
Absolutely, no, that's that's unacceptable to pay invoices that late, you know.
I know there's been, um, I had sat and talked with Dr. Cassavant, you know, about this process. And um, Tammy Culler now works for the school district. And, you know, she did the MSBA reimbursements when she worked for the town, and he said that they would be willing to assist in that process. You know, even if we got to the point where, you know, we came up with a, like a, I don't know, like a work together, like a double check. Where, you know, Tammy at the school and, you know, the treasurer here, you know, work together, you know, because the school is gonna be a huge project. And there's gonna be a lot of transactions happening quickly, especially once the, you know, it it's in full blown construction.
But I think tomorrow night at the building um, committee meeting and Carter is, we 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 are discussing some of that. You have an OPM and then I think that we're gonna break down the committee into a smaller segment that gets to. I mean, everybody can't meet every single week or sometimes twice a week or, you know, when the wood ship boiler, um, I was part of that too and I met with them. Because I have a more flexible schedule than most people, um, to be able to sign off on stuff, so I would imagine the same thing. Could happen for me again as well, but that's not been decided, that's not, just gonna be discussed.
Okay, alright, so MSBA processing, okay, I got it, so what else?
Um, so then we got the financial reporting system, um, that's on page fifteen. That's just talking about Vadar and I, you know, we've already talked about that and kinda killed that, it's changed, we're, yeah, so.
Is there any updates to Vadar for for eighteen coming in, do you know?
Updates, it's, it's a cloud, it's a cloud based software now, so it's constantly updating.
Okay, just wanna confirm.
So then, you know, we go to lack of documented policies and procedures. And that's pretty much just saying, lack of formal cash receipts policy, centralized HR function, lack of, lack of, lack of formal pro- uh, purchasing process. And then it lists, you know, ineffective leadership, ineffective accountant and ineffective treasurers and. Um, and lack of central HR figure, and I believe we're working with the Collins Center for this, so this is kinda.
Some of these we're just gonna pick off, um, because I happen to have them in the can, so we had one on uh. Bad check policy.
Okay.
Cause different departments pursued them differently or not really effectively, so we'll have that for you Monday night. The next one is on turnovers. To make it clear, uh, at what dollar level, everybody has to do a turnover, um, or at no less than once a week. What form they need to use, how that needs to happen.
You guys are just taking it one at a time and they're handing you these things back? You're just one at a time, what is the, what is like the the timing of this, just so we can kinda anticipate when?
Yeah, when are they giving back for?
Uh, Collins is supposed to be back here in two weeks.
Twenty fifth, right?
Okay.
I believe so.
So that's what, three weeks since you talked to him on Monday?
Um, I think it's, that'll be two weeks since we talked with him, I believe, I think they're coming in next week.
Okay.
And what they've done is they've set up sort of a table of contents, uh, and then we'll pick off. The ones that they can do within their contract, uh, each policy should be adopted in the same manner. Following a a basic template. And we'll work on the ones that are of most immediate concern.
Okay, same font, same size, same header, same everything, you know what I mean, so it's all professionalized and professional.
So when I walk into an office and somebody's, you know, in their accounting house tallying up. And the pile's larger than it looks, cause they haven't done it for two and a half weeks, that makes it, to me, that makes it an immediate priority.
Yes.
Especially when I've already got one written that we just need to.
Okay.
What they did was they brought in the very, the police chief, they had a four or five folks, kinda went through the policy, made some modifications they thought.
Okay, perfect, and um, so I guess that takes care of that, I mean, as long as that's actively being pursued. And the risks are being mitigated with the policies and procedures, and that gives us the next three ones are the reconciliations for the treasurer. Bank to cash book, the treasurer cash book to the general ledger and the accounts receivable, we already talked about those and beat those to death. So that gives us a procurement process, which is on page nineteen, or eighteen, yeah. So there's no formal procurement process, um, there's risk of fraud, and the fraud risk that was highlighted in there, um, was saying that. I believe he made mention, um, of two vendors, and he said it at the audit meeting, there's two vendors, one, they were just slightly different under the threshold of ten do- ten thousand dollars. So they avoided reaching out for uh, the OSHA training and then the solic- solic- solicitation of written responses. So that's a, it's a fraud risk right there, um, because it's fraudulent, right, if it's the same vendor.
And that's what Diane's been working on and she and I will, that's gonna be driven by her timeline.
Alright, and uh, what else was there, lack of knowledge across departments on the bidding, and I think the inspector general also touches on that, right, the bidding process? So the internal, so if you're handling all that, Diane, you're coming up with a formalized policy procedure. I don't, I don't see any further reason to discuss any other questions on that one. Timeliness of submission of reports to the department of revenue, uh, this is kinda still like the single audit, um, they said lack of timeliness in submitting balance sheets. And Schedule A in all years. Kelly, you haven't had the time to really submit it, so this this year it should be on time, correct?
Well, part of the, part of the problem with all of these is each year it feeds into the next and it feeds into the next. So if it wasn't filed correctly this year and you go into this year and your numbers aren't balanced from there, this year doesn't balance.
Okay.
And so that's why it's been so out of whack.
Right.
Now this year, because there's always a line at the bottom where you can put for an adjustment. So I had spoken to Deb Wagner and she said that for this year, I will put the number there. That will adjust it to bring it forward into the next year where it will balance.
Oh, so she's giving you a fresh balance.
Yeah, there's gonna be an adjustment line where I can put it, yeah, it's, you know, to make that balance where it, where we can have our good fund balances going forward.
Okay.
And I don't want you to misread the, when I say force, that there will be adjusting entries made that she, DOR is comfortable with based upon the audit reports. And that will then clean everything up.
Well, you're not making the adjusted entries, a professional's making is what you're saying.
Well, we're we're gonna make them, but they're, they're gonna make it possible for us to do.
DOR informational thing in the back.
Yeah.
Um, right, Carter, that's where, and they decided what, you are gonna do this and you're not gonna do that and you are gonna, I mean, that's all laid out.
Kelly had made mention that the previous accountant was forcing certain accounts to reconcile, yeah, that's not taking place like that, it's actually a professional giving it, yes.
Yeah, it's because there, the Schedule As and all of those are automatic forms that come from the DOR, they're a fill-in form. But like this page has to tie to this page and this page ties to that, and this person did this report and this ties here. It's the same way it works for the tax recap when we do the, um, the tax, you know, um, the tax number for each year. You know, people think, oh, we can just pick that number out of the thing, well, that's not how it works, we probably have, you know, twenty documents that have to be done. And this one ties to this page and this ties to here and it all, all of that calculates together to come up with our tax rate. So the Schedule A first basically does the same thing. There's reports that the the um, treasurer will do on the cash that then will lead into the Schedule A. To show that, okay, to the cash and the GL, does this balance, does this balance, and that's not happened, I mean, it has not balanced now, you know.
And that seems to be uh, an issue of, I mean, you're you're doing something so high level, but you're working with it on a poor foundation, I mean.
Correct.
Have any financial data to give you a solid.
Right.
So that's, it's an issue that's been rolling forward.
Clean up.
Okay.
Get us back on square one.
As long as all these other things are put in place and then we can, okay.
To move forward.
So, does each, does each, um, between here and the um, tax recap sheet, when I was reading. It's, it's was a matter of, I think for the tax recaps, it said, like, nobody really knows how to do that, but I'm assuming that.
That's been taken care of.
Okay.
Because in the, in before, um.
It wasn't just about numbers, it it was about the fact that it wasn't.
Documentation, and before, um, you know, in FY twelve, when Scott Sawyer was here, he did it all, he did it all. But the way it's set up is you have checks and balances, so there's a section that the the town clerk does based on the town meetings. There's a part the assessor does, there's a part that the treasurer does, there's a part that I do. So all of our work has to tie together and work together. So if we, when we go to like save our page, if this person over here didn't enter their stuff right, it's not gonna save. So there's the checks and balance of the four of us that have to make sure all of our information that we've put in that is correct. And so the four of us have to work together as a team, you know, to, to make sure that. Everything from the town meeting, you know, each article that has anything financial, the town clerk has to record that. You know, what's an appropriation, what's a transfer, um, what's a bond offering, what's, you know, all of that data has to be put in there. For each town meeting that we've had that collates with that year. Um, you know, then you have the treasurer that does the D E one, that has to deal with all the borrowing and all of that. Um, you know, and that's part of what we're gonna, because those have not been done right either.
How about the overlays?
And the overlay is what the assessor does. Um, you know, so there's all of these different moving parts of the tax recap, but it takes four people to do it. And prior to that, Scott Sawyer did it all, so.
Does each person, okay, so if I, does each person know how to do their piece? Is there a cheat sheet, is there something that you go by, enter this here, enter this, I mean, I don't get to see that part, but basically what it says here, it's almost like. People didn't really know how to do their parts of it.
Right, nobody knew how to do it because he had done it all. So, since we, he did everybody's piece, so nobody.
Overlay, D E one and.
Okay, but what I'm saying, does each, like, where are you looking to, do you understand what the question I'm asking?
They actually did a pretty good job with it.
Yeah, we've got it now.
Okay.
We have it now, yes.
But if you, if, could the next person have it, like, what do you, what do you use, what do you? But there's no such thing as a cheat sheet that says you have to put this number for, there is.
There, there's no real manual to it, you need, you need, you need to know it.
Is there some sort of training that, that is offered for Schedule A? Now, is there any sort of education that you can receive other than just knowing your job?
baptism by fire.
Wow, okay.
But you could, you could build a procedural thing in place.
I guess I'm trying to see, like, for me, like, I wrote down, like, you should have, you know, when it comes to, we've talked about a calendar. And maybe we need to figure out how to use something a little bit more electronically so that we can look at it as well, like, not only are we just meeting. Like, the monthly stuff, are we meeting the municipal finance calendar, are we, when are we gonna look at this, so it's, it's kind of like meshed together. You know, and then it's, when I was helping you, I'm like, well, how come, okay, well, maybe there is a checklist, I don't know, but like, what's the checklist? Have I done this this month, now I can, you know what I'm saying, like, just like, okay, I have a to-do list everywhere I go, so.
Right.
You know, like, is there some kind of, I guess that's what I'm asking?
Um.
No.
It basically, you have your.
Policy and a procedure is one thing, but if you don't have, like, I have to get all this stuff done. So that they can do that and that's all I'm saying, it's, it's not kindergarten, but I'm, I mean.
Be a monthly schedule or checklist for them to.
Well, it's kinda like, I mean, when it comes to the D O R reporting, um, kinda what, what I have had to do. Is I've had to reach out to other town accountants and say, okay, here's this section, what do you know about this, what can you tell me? There is no, you know, there's not a black and white manual you can pull out and open it and it tells you.
There's no cheat sheet, as simple as, you know, when we were doing last year, as I said to Kelly, make sure you max the overlay. And she'd keep adding it, but she'd say we're over the tax limit and it even took me a few minutes to remember.
I had to.
Oh, wait a minute, that's because in this state, we only use two decimals, not three. So you gotta remember to roll it back.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there, there is no manual.
But you're saying, you know, to cut, to cams, you know, so this is taken care of now because you have that, those.
Right, we have the people in place now.
Yeah, you need to have.
I will say though, you know, from my perspective, um, now that I will have time to think. As I'm doing this process, which I didn't before because I had so many other things. What I've always had in any job is I've had my own step-by-step manual. And so this year, I will have the time to be able to, you know, make a copy of this and say, okay, this is how you do this. Throw it in a book and then later when I have time, I can type it up so that if I am gone. I will be able to pass that to the next person and say, okay, this is what in your Schedule A, this is how you do this. Plus I can run reports out of the system. That was one of the reasons, I know there was this big hubbub about our account numbers, you know, we have the short good account numbers that everybody just loved. And then when we changed, we got these giant long account numbers, well, that was because of the Schedule A. Because you, we couldn't pull the data we needed. So, by the long, by having all the segments, I'm able to run a report, it comes right up, I know exactly what I need to put in this line for the Schedule A. So I can put those reports in there to show this is what you're looking for to get this information, so. But, that whole, those whole account numbers were for the Schedule A.
Awesome, so, so do you feel comfortable moving forward with the Schedule A process?
Yes, yes, yeah.
For the selectmen, Division of Local Services Technical Assistance Bureau will help you with the tax recap sheet.
Thanks.
They can, they actually have training seminars for that.
Okay, I have made some notes to my, okay, thank you.
Annie Cola had a whole book with everything you needed to know about how to do that work.
Thank you.
Um, so the next, next item, um, after that is other post-employment benefit obligation, O P E B.
Yeah, O P E B.
Um, so nine years without accounting for the O P E B on the balance sheet, um, and then if you had read it, the guy said it's changing in twenty eighteen anyway, so it's irrelevant. Now, um, however, twenty eighteen's rapidly approaching and I think, um, lack of knowledge and lack of proper, uh, processes. The issue is why we never did O P E B, um, and to gear up for twenty eighteen and kinda understand how we do. Um, do that process is very important for twenty eighteen, so. I, the only, the only remediation I can think of is the proper training on that and how to do that.
Well, it's not necessarily the training, it's the actuarial study that needs to be done.
Okay.
So we have the money and the budget that's been approved now for F Y eighteen to hire the actuarial to do that for the town. Um, but it's just, you know, we need to do a, a bid, I don't know exactly how that will work.
Well, there's, yeah, there's, there's two, there's two things that happened, um, one is, um. The initial data was entered, um, by someone who, I don't think understood. How you needed to segregate, uh, your various units. So the initial data run had all your departments in it. Had all the general fund employees, all the light employees, all the water employees and all of the sewer employees were all included. And those have to be segregated. Um, so, when the data goes to be entered, that, and I think that when this is done in the accounting department. Um, drawn from the payroll, you'll have people that are just more knowledgeable a- about how to do it.
Yes.
Uh, the second piece, uh, was that the, uh, software that was used, uh, was a relatively simplistic. Low power, um, it didn't include, uh, life insurance, it didn't include dental. It looked at it as if the only O P E B, uh, you were offering, the only benefit you were offering was the, uh, health insurance. Uh, and, um, so that, that just. Even after we tried to strip some things out, the, the numbers, it just, we got reports, but they just. They just didn't relate to anything I'd seen on similar sized communities and the auditor looked at it and said, this just. I'll look, I just added another town, similar size, similar number of employees, here's their number, here's your number. So, uh, the first things first, uh, is for, to get the final rules. I don't know if they've been issued yet or not, you, you might know, um.
Google that right now.
And we included, um, I think forty-five hundred to five thousand dollars. Uh, the hope was, as more and more firms have done these actuarial studies, the price has been dropping. Uh, so we're hopeful that we can get a firm that will actually do it for us.
Okay, at a modest price.
At, at a more reasonable price, we'll pay on the general fund side, sewer would have to pay on its side. Uh, with better input materials.
So we, we've already established though that we can have an accountant, that was all, um, I've heard that we have to do something else again. Because of the changes or?
Well, it just to establish it, the minimum is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we have sixty. Sixty something thousand sitting there, so what we have to do is we'll have to go to like a, an investment agency. So they will set up that initial sixty whatever and they'll keep that account until we get the two fifty.
And then you can sweep that.
We can actually open the full O P E B.
You, you don't have enough money in any given year, uh.
But we had had that approved, uh, on the account.
Sitting in the, and it's still, sitting in the encumbrance fund, yeah.
Piece of it was done, but, okay.
Now, are we, we're not gonna get, how, how hard are we gonna get hit with this, since this should've been established in two thousand nine?
You're not alone.
It's one of, not the only community.
Not the only community.
Not the only community, it's, it's going to hurt you a little bit on your bond rating.
Yeah.
Uh, and it will hurt you in your bond offering. The light department, um, I forget, they're actually moving right along. They haven't started to set aside anything for water yet, um, but this will be an unknown liability on your books.
Okay.
And the only town that Tony knows that's totally funded their O P E B is Wellesley. And they took out a loan and just did it and were done, so.
High tax rate to stay.
The only town in the Commonwealth that's fully funded.
They were the first town in the state, they created special legislation to allow them to do it and then they just bonded the whole thing and did it all.
Loan to do it though and added it to.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Which.
Yeah, we can't do that.
Which at the interest rate they were getting.
You seen Wellesley?
I'm sure it made sense in Wellesley.
Yeah.
So, we're, you know, not like.
We do have those funds in, in the budget, but it is a project that we'll have to keep an eye on during the course of the year to make sure it actually happens.
And then, and Kelly, this is, uh, under your responsibility for O P E B? Or is this, okay.
Yeah, myself and the treasurer, because I don't have the benefit information at this point.
Okay.
Um, my new, when we get the assistant town accountant, they will handle that.
Okay.
So that is the person that will have all of that data to give to the actuarial.
Okay, and then once that's done, it'll come back and we can.
Right.
Move, okay. And, I mean, that takes care of it for, uh, the material controls and like I said, pages twenty-three to, um, thirty-one on this. Those are all, you know, recommendations, they're not gonna impact us financially at the moment. Like I said, the meat and potatoes was nine to twenty-two and that's what we really need to take care of first and foremost.
Well, um, let me say, uh, if I can draw your attention, uh, to twenty-three. Uh, that's something that was in the D O R letter, uh, the betterments.
Yeah.
Um, how they've been split up, there's no great historic data on that, that's seventy-five, twenty-five. Uh, so Tony's going to work with Kelly to develop an amortization schedule. So that over the balance of those, uh, that corrects itself over time. On the ambulance write-off policy, that is one we're trying to get done by the end of this year. Uh, the hope is that once we can get a policy whereby once a year, you write things off so that somewhere's in the first. Um, you know, fifteen days of seventeen, let us say.
Right.
They bring in, yes, for fiscal sixteen.
I got you.
So that you can be assured there's been anywhere from twelve, uh, actually by the time you bill and such, but basically. Ten to twenty-four months, uh, or so of collection effort, uh, and then those would be written off. For, uh, in time to turn over to the auditors, so this is one that's a kinda high honor.
And who's reconciling that, would that be the, would that be coastal directly with the accountants or?
Yeah, they send reports monthly to, you know, tell us, you know, who's paid, who hasn't paid.
Okay.
What was written off by Medicare insurance, you know, that type of thing. Um, the only thing I've seen in the, in the workings of all of that is I, I think there needs to be a better communication with the people. That especially if it's a hardship, because I've seen that written in lots of places, you know, if you have a. If you have a hardship notice, you know, where you really can't pay it, you can come to the select board or write a select, you know, I've, I've seen that written. But it's like, I wonder if that's getting communicated to the people on the other side. You know, that's what I, I think we need to come up with something that, you know, I don't know if that goes in coastal's bills. I, I don't know how that process works.
That's something that we need to sit down with the chief and work through because coastal bills for so many times, then it gets turned over to a collection agency. Uh, and then at some point, so getting this added into that will be important.
Yeah.
Right. Let's take care of, uh, uh, custodial.
Um, the payroll withholding accounts, that's something I'm planning to work on, um, this next fiscal year. Um, there, the, I, I just can't even begin to tell you how out of balance they are. That was why we did the budget this year, to put the withholding amounts from the employees directly as revenue. Um, and the full expenditure on the other side, so that those accounts can stay stagnant for a year until I can figure out. You know, exactly what's the problems, what, you know, where we are and then they can, um, the auditors can make the adjustments to clean them out. For the F Y eighteen audit.
Who we work with for payroll, we still work with the same company?
With Harper's, yes.
Obviously, we're still having an issue with tracking like vacation, sick time, personal time.
Uh, I've, I've suggested, uh, that the town should go out for proposals. And I don't know if she had a chance to get, uh, the email out yet, but I've asked Carol Lee, uh, to send an email out to the. Co-exer's treasure collectors association to see if anyone has recently issued a request for proposals. Uh, and what firms that perhaps they, they sent it out to.
Cause also Harper's doesn't control that, they won't be able to control that data?
Well, part of it's, um, part of it's a thirty B issue. I, I believe that since you've been using them and using them and using it, uh, really is over the, the limit for procurement. Um, but, uh, I do believe there's been some degradation in Harper's support because I do know of. Um, customers that have done exactly what you're asking about going back fifteen years now. So, um, I, I think that Harper's has, uh, uh, lost its customer service touch. From my experience with it here, uh, in terms of supporting even simple reports.
So what goes along, my next question is obviously tracking the employees' sick time, personal time, vacation time, obviously, uh, Carol Lee must be picking that up, I would assume.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Uh, which obviously, you know, working off what a secondary spreadsheet, I would assume.
You're, you're doing it, you're doing it all manually.
Their own spreadsheet, it's very time consuming. Yes, it is extremely time consuming.
Well, there's really no others.
There's been no other way to do it.
Way to do it and we had kept asking for that and then.
And like Harper's is the first payroll company, I mean, I've dealt with pretty much them all and they're the first one I've ever seen that if you need a report. You have to call them, they have to set it up and then you can print it. I've always had a report writer that I could pull whatever data and run a report.
Usually you go on their website or something, you can pull that data firsthand.
It, it's, it's crazy.
So it's, it's on our work list to issue or request proposals over the next two, three months.
Thank you.
When you say proposals, that's for a new payroll company or is that?
They're free to reply, but we'll be looking for value-added services plus pricing.
Okay. Um, capital asset tracking and recording, um, that was the inventory, right, that was, that's what we're talking about is?
Yeah, that's what, um, that would be another task of the, uh, new assistant town accountant is to begin working on that. Um, Tony, you know, he suggested a, it's a very simplistic software that we could use for that. But, like, right now, our fixed assets at list, it just says building. We have no idea what building that is, you know, how long has it been on here, what is it? Um, so that particular project, I foresee that being, that's probably a three, maybe four-year project. To figure out, to fit, you know, because there's a lot of time-consuming, you know, issues of. Breaking down each thing and trying to figure out what they are.
As a municipality, we don't need to depreciate any assets, correct?
Hmm.
So.
No, under Gatsby thirty-four, you still need to do that.
Need to depreciate assets, okay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
That, that, so yeah, that would definitely take a longer time.
That's gonna be a huge, yeah.
Water lines, sewer lines, sidewalk, roads.
We don't even have that.
You're supposed to track everything, so for instance, when we put the new roof on the fire station in Templeton Center. You know, when was it originally built, what was the value, it's depreciated down, we had that roof. We should've decided a schedule, um, and you have some flexibility as to what you wanna use. Uh, and you know, the following year, the building's gone down another year, the roof's gone down one, yeah, you're supposed to track all this.
On that, I mean, they're, they make the fixed asset managing software where the depreciation schedules and, and that can be taken care. Well, well, on that, I mean, they're, they make the fixed asset managing software where the depreciation schedules and, and that can be taken care of relatively quickly.
You still have to do all the, the cataloging and the, the calculations.
The legwork, the cataloging, yes.
The cataloging is what's gonna be the, yeah.
And I, I don't even know where to begin with that, I don't know who we should have head up that project.
Right, yeah, that's. Well, that'll be part of the.
The assistant town accountant, is what she said.
Yeah.
That'll be a, you know, and that's why I say, I mean, you know, with, between you look at the daily, you know, stuff that he or she will be doing, and then you try to add in, you know, these extra things, because the tracking with the payroll withholding accounts and the insurance, that whole process has got to be tightened up, because i- in a lot of these withholding accounts, you know, I wondered, did we, did somebody pay too much? Did somebody not pay enough? You know, and, and I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to ever unravel all of that. Um, but that will be, once we can get that reined in, which to me that would be a priority, that then this would be something, you know, that could be part, you know, okay, I'm gonna do this section over the next four months, this is my.
We have to figure out the, the date to go with, where all the assets coming in at a certain time period are recorded.
Goal. Correct, correct.
And we have to figure out, um, essentially, and that's something for the GASB, what they consider to be a fixed asset. I think in IRS, they consider it anything over twenty-five hundred, you can say is a fixed asset. Or in, in mass standard would be ten thousand, so I don't know what the government standard is.
Right, yeah. Right, yeah. Yeah.
But moving forward, we'll have to set a date where we start recording it all, and then move out and.
Do that, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I think that's something to look up, I used to sound pretty educated in that.
I used to do taxes. That's my favorite job.
Me too, but I wouldn't say that at work.
I wouldn't say that at all either.
Not anymore.
Oh, Lord.
So we already discussed the tax.
Much of this ends up getting done in your public works and utilities departments.
Yeah, when everything's, that will be easier.
And that's the other thing, sewer, that all has to be updated too. Yeah, that, you know, that whole section, so.
It should all be fully depreciated at this point, right, sewer lines and water lines?
Hmm, I mean, it depends on what you pick, if you've got a, a treatment plant that you're gonna depreciate over forty years. Uh, and then the other thing is that, uh, many communities will say, okay, even though that water line's been in the ground for fifty years, we're not gonna value it, whereas other communities would say, no, we're gonna value it and depreciate it, because we need to show the kinds of investment that the community needs to be making in plant capital.
Okay.
You've got some baseline decisions to make.
Um, tax rate recapulation? Capitulation.
Like capitulation.
Yeah, I mean, that's just basically.
I'm late, I'm tired and.
Did you say it again?
Recapitulation.
Yeah, yeah. Um, a lot of that, again, is just from, you know, the not, you know, the tax rate not being set correctly, because we didn't do all the other reporting, you know, which, I mean, again, we have that, pretty much, I think, we'll have that under control. Um, I mean, this year's tax recap, there will be a lot of additional items that, you know, to clean up these prior years. Um, but the DOR and Tony have already said that they will look together, once we, you know, are okay with it, they'll both look at it to make sure that we've covered everything that we needed to for the cleanup of the prior years, before it's ever submitted.
We already have a general outline of some things that they'll be expecting, so for instance, uh, the five fifty on the DE one that wasn't raised previously. Uh, there's already in that memo a general outline of, uh, how we're gonna be approaching this.
It's in the wayback.
Can I ask how it is the DOR, um, signed off on everything for all these years? Like, don't they approve? Um, like, in going through all this, I'm like, if you know, well, did they not know it was wrong, or did they just kinda go with it because they knew we weren't doing audits? I mean, how did that happen?
Well.
I mean, this year, they seem like really fully engulfed.
Let's, let's, let's use the DE one, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Um, they don't necessarily know what you have on your books for debt, and what was that excluded, and what wasn't. So when you fill it out and say, here's, um, our debt that's been excluded, and here's what we're gonna pay on it, and you sign it.
That's it.
That's it.
We give them too much credit, Carter.
Well, that's not giving them any credit, other than saying they see it signed.
It was worse than that.
You know, um, so there's some things like that, and at the end, when, you know, remember, when they look at revenues, they only look at whether things are up or down, ten percent.
Okay.
It's, it's automated, they used to be a little bit more in your face when they actually came out to the community and did it with you manually. Um, that said, I do think that they'll be, um, closely watching.
Yes.
Everything, they've actually, you know, I don't know how you got into this, but I will say that, um, in my observation of the past year, they've really been pretty good to help us work through a number of these things.
And compensated absence calculation procedures.
We just.
Again, that's the spreadsheets of all the people, and if we had that in the payroll company, we'd run a report and it would be done, so.
That's just absurd. That's killing two birds with one stone.
Yeah.
Uh, and that, that will be done, I do have a question, Kelly sent off to the auditor. Um, and that is, is actually not that difficult to do.
Okay.
It'll be a liability carried on the books, because you don't have the cash to create a reserve account.
Um, community del- development block grant, water fund impact.
Yeah, CDPG.
Yeah, that was something that, um, the community development, um, had provided money to the water department, I believe. Um, and the water, the, the wa- water department auditors didn't know that, so they never put that as part of their audit. So I'm not sure how, um, the water department is doing a correction on that, or, you know, that's something that they're gonna have to deal with, but that's where, if we'd have had the community development audits completed on time, they would've known this information, so.
So, okay, so water got both those allotments of money?
Um, yes.
The three ninety-six in the sixties?
Well, this was all back bay, right, they replaced all the sewer lines down there? The water lines?
I believe.
Wow, that's probably, that's probably a good guess, but then again, it's, they were given that money, but they didn't know it.
Right.
But then when they reconc- when they would re- uh, reconcile, wouldn't they know that there would be?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm not really sure how.
I would hate to be short that kind of money.
Understood.
Well, it's not short that they were money, that, they weren't short any money, because it was paid for with CDPG.
Right.
What they were short of is that if you look at their capital assets report, the value of that investment in plant wasn't on their books, the town held it over on its books. But it's not your, uh, infrastructure, once it becomes part of the water plant.
Do they have a timeframe to utilize that grant money? Or is it just sitting there?
It, it, it's not money, that's, that, that's money, it's been spent, it's done.
It's already been done, it's all done.
A pipe went in the ground.
Understood. I got it.
It's just, think of it as, you, you paid for something, but you paid for it on Doug's house, and when Doug filled out his, you know, uh, uh, net assets report to go to the bank, he didn't put it on his, you put it on yours.
You put it on his house?
But it's not, even, that, yes.
That's crazy. I'm not doing stuff on your house. It needs stuff.
I'm sure it does.
Sure it does.
So it was in addition to Doug's house, but you carried it on your net asset report.
I got it.
It probably didn't come out right, it probably got reported to the Ethics Commission, Doug. But that's the simp- that's the simp- most simplistic example.
I got it.
Okay. Um, and that's, and how are we taking care of that, that was just through the audits, since we completed our audits, now it's, that should be corrected moving forward, as long as we're timely with the audits.
Yeah, Tony, I believe Tony was gonna contact their auditing firm, and they were going to, you know, get that.
Do whatever adjustment they needed to do.
Whatever needed to be done on the water side.
So with that, with that being done, say that, e- whether that's done or not, this issue can't come up again if we stay timely with our audits?
Correct. Yes, well, and, yeah, we don't.
Okay.
Well, you don't only have to do a single audit, if we got federal.
Right, if we.
Federal money, and we don't.
And federal funds.
Qualified, at the moment, so it's gonna be a bad.
Yeah.
In the future, when we are qualified.
Yeah, so then we have to make sure that we do that.
This is more like the OPEB, you need to remember that you have four reporting entities. You have the town, you have your enterprise fund for sewer, and then you have your light plant and your water plant. And when you're calculating whether it's OPEB, net assets, uh, capital assets, they need to be in the right box.
Okay. These obviously weren't. Um, all right, so I, that, we take care of that, and the treasurer collector, I'm sure we could speak for decades on this, but I think we already beat it to death.
I think it's a, there's already, a lot of it's already been gone through, um, based on the other material, um, facts.
Yep.
We already went over the whole, um, with Carol Lee.
All right, and then we had discussed that, uh, for the executive session, we're looking at next Monday?
Monday.
We can hold that at the end?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, something else.
Yeah, well, because we were supposed to go through the, um, is there any, yeah, so I, I did make some, um,
The memo? Oh, yeah, gotcha. Yeah.
Not really notes, but 'cause it was addressed, I had some.
The second page?
Uh, you know what I mean, that's all over, so I'm on it.
Oh, okay.
Well, we've talked about the, you know, the making sure that all of the stuff is, um, a deficit that exist- like, this is telling exactly what's gonna happen with each piece of the deficits, and where they're gonna go, and the fact that we have to get a ban, and then, um, if, um, I, I don't.
So, so you had a.
I made a note to myself, but I don't know why I wrote this.
So you had a deficit, and when I say deficit, you, you hadn't borrowed the, the cash, you hadn't made a deposit in your capital accounts, um, the, by the time we went to town, meaning roughly one point four or five millions of dollars.
Right.
That deficit needs to be cleared up before the end of this fiscal year. Uh, we're doing that, the, uh, bond, uh, the ban bids went out, um, I believe this morning, uh, and we're gonna ask you all to, uh, be here for a special one-item board meeting, uh, at six-thirty or six PM on the, uh, the thirtieth of May. We'll have bids in next week, we need a couple of days to look them over, get paperwork ready, and then on the thirtieth of May, we'll ask you to, um, ratify those, those bonds and sign anything.
Yeah.
Uh, and then that five millions of dollars in cash will be deposited within a couple of days after that. Um, that will clean up all of these deficits in the capital account. And that's basically items one through four.
Okay.
Uh, actually, items one through five. Uh, we will be using some of that for the redesign, um, on the school and the bidding. Uh, probably four-fifty, give or take.
Okay.
Um, the repayment schedule, um, we'll either deal with it through an appropriation at the fall town meeting, or we'll put it on the recap sheet, because it's debt, you have a statutory obligation, and we can simply add it to the, uh, the DE one and the, uh, recap sheet. Uh, six, um, so, um, Kelly, what page is this? Oh, let me, I was out of order for a moment. Uh, six, uh, you had about eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, in appropriation deficits. You've already paid them, they're on that schedule that you were looking at, you have thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, page ten, thank you.
Page ten.
Um, so the, the Gantt chart that I showed you, uh, has DLR certifying free cash going into the fall town meeting, and you will use some of that free cash to pay off these deficits. Now, since you've already paid it, what you're really doing is cleaning up your books, that cash will come back to you.
As free cash next year.
As free cash next year.
Gotcha.
Yep. Um, and that, that looks to be, um, about, um, four hundred and fifty-five, uh, of that, uh, is debt, and DLR's agreed that we can simply add that to the DE one and claw it back.
Okay.
Which was, um, a very.
That's a weight.
Truly a very generous thing, I actually, I tried to do it once a number of years ago on thirteen thousand bucks with Ms. Wagner.
She said my life.
She was not as generous back then, on a much smaller slug.
But it's okay if we do it with, um, four hundred and fifty thousand.
So every time Tony said we were gonna do this, I'm like, really? Um, and, uh, they signed off, you had eighty-seven thousand that you used, uh, on last year's recap sheet. Um, should we have done it this way, should we have done it that way, but at the end of the day, DLR had advised Kelly of what to do in putting the recap sheet together, so that one is, um, done. Uh, so then you're gonna have about two hundred and eleven thousand, uh, in, in some deficits, so, uh, basically, you've got about five, six hundred thousand all total. Now, once seventeen closes up, some of this game plan will change, may change a little bit, um, I don't think so. Um, but those are some of the actions at the fall town meeting. Uh, item ten, we've already talked about. Um, the accountant and the auditor will develop an amortization schedule, uh, so in, in this, how much, about five hundred thousand? Kelly?
And?
The Betterments that were overcollected?
Yeah.
Not distributed yet.
Right, or, yeah.
So, um, they'll develop an amortization schedule to apply those amounts over the remainder of the, uh, loan.
Of the bonds, yeah, that are there.
Over the bonds, right. Um, uh, item eleven is something that, that, uh, hopefully will be resolved within the next six weeks or so. Uh, and, uh, twelve, uh, fiscal year nineteen will be a challenge, I think we've pretty well worked that one through. You know you've got issues coming down the line, that you're gonna have to deal with. We will start on one of those tomorrow morning. I'll be meeting with the insurance advisory committee at ten. Um, and we're going to talk with them about the fact, uh, that the board, in accepting the, uh, changes to the benefit platform on health insurance, that brought the rate down to eleven point one-four, if I recall right, did not cut the overall budget, so we've got roughly ten thousand, twelve thousand in there, uh, that we hope will be enough to retain a benefits consultant, which will, uh, look at joint purchase groups, GIC, um, other insurers, uh, looking at the benefit platform, putting, uh, a package out to bid for us. Um, so, for instance, um, uh, in my wife's community, uh, we got, there, we got the thirteen point three percent spike as well. Uh, but they put it out to pa- bid and, um, came up with, Fallon, uh, with a couple of plans, one was about a decrease of around six percent, the other, uh, second plan was an increase of around four percent. Um, so we'll start that process with the IAC tomorrow, and hope to, to bring them along.
Fingers crossed.
Well, I, I mean, it's a, it's a very generous benefit platform that you have with a insurer, uh, that I think the employees have had some pretty good experiences with overall, that affair.
With the current one?
Yeah. They're pretty happy with, and, you know, um, when you start tinkering with, with health insurance, that's, can get pretty emotional for some people.
Absolutely.
Especially if the doctors don't transition.
Sometimes they don't.
Right, understood. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Kelly.
So I, I think that if we can get that Gantt chart, uh, that Cam started with, we can fill it in a little bit more, and then take Doug's idea and start to put some responsible initials to it, DHB initials in some of them.
I think maybe we, like, use it as, like, somehow a working document, like, you know, like, even, just, we can s- I, I'm gonna do thirty-B, I already said I would.
Yeah, I can post this somewhere.
So, are there other things that, you know, we can assign, maybe just through you and Carter, and then, that way, you don't have fifty million people.
We, we can, we can make it part of the quarterly financial team report, where are we?
Yeah, where's? Yeah, where's, yeah.
Okay. Um, and I mean, I, I'll touch this document up, and I'll distribute it to you, all the notes that I took, uh, regarding all these issues of what was going on, so you guys have.
I don't wanna lose sight of the best practices, I mean, we have the things that are most immediate, which is, such as the write-off policy and some of the others.
Yeah, we have to.
Right.
Uh, so that the seventeen audits in a tad better place, and the seventeen letters in a tad better place.
Absolutely, I agree.
If it was half the pages, I'd be super happy. If, uh, I could be half that number of pages.
Well, let's, let's shoot for that. Remember, we got the management letter in April.
Yeah.
So we've got, you know, eight weeks, so I, I'm, it, I'd be happy if we had the same number of pages, but it said, and they took care of.
Yeah, we have to.
Well, a lot of those in, in the audit, uh, material, I mean, it's, a lot of them are twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, and it says twenty sixteen, you know, no issues noted, so. I'm, I'm hoping that it severely cut down those issues, but once again, it comes down to that factor, if Kelly's removed from the situation, we're back to square one, or even, even if the TA's removed from the situation, we're back to square one.
I don't, I don't wanna have another, you know, um, we've, I, I looked through several, um, management letters, like I said, to, um, Kent, same thing, same thing, same thing, can't do that, so you know what, we've done this best practice, we've done this, we've, we've created this policy, we've, you know, and that way, they know that we've cinched some stuff up, a lot of work with a, you know.
Well, and I think too, you know, with this now, you know, because when I, I mean, normally when an auditor comes in, I hand him a book, and it has the general ledger, and I have the backup for every single line item on that general ledger in that book, they don't need to look for it. I think that would be a good thing for us is to have the management letter, and, okay, so here's this page, these are the items. Attached to that, these are the things we've done about it, here are, here's the policy for this, the policy for this, to just aid in,
And just bridge to them.
in that process of, here's what we've done since this letter, you know, that they can mark, okay, yeah, mark this off, we've got it, we've got it.
Yeah, you don't wanna deal with auditors either way, either, they're very nasty people.
The more. That's really nice.
The more data you can give them upfront, the better it is.
No, it makes it very, a lot easier for them.
Yeah, yeah.
And Tony is doing our audit?
Yes.
Car- okay.
For seventeen, and then we will need to either go out to bid, um, you know, I'm not sure if he's gonna continue with us, or, you know, I don't know.
Okay.
He, he agreed, he, um, would be open to being.
He would be open to that.
I think the way he set this up was, he was very generous in the way he worded a lot of the stuff in here, as in, he didn't tell us we suck too bad. Um, and I think he did that as a political move, because he wants to work with us in the long term, I mean, most auditors would've.
Oh, I think he told us we suck.
He very, very nicely.
The conversations that I had with, we saw.
I mean, you see, like.
But you know what, that's not really the, the point, is that he's honest.
No, you see a lot of like the D and T, or like the Ernst and Young reports, the big four, when they write it up, they'll, they'll just rip you to shreds, they don't care.
Honest. Yeah, they're not nice.
And he did a very nice way of putting us, putting us in a place where.
Politically.
Unless it's, unless it's Enron they're.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Arthur Andersen, they were, they were the auditors, so.
Well, we, um, you will have to issue a, either, uh, re-up with, with Tony, or, um, uh, issue a new request for proposals. Do understand, uh, that, uh, you gotta bargain, frankly, and you'll be at least thirty-three thousand
Okay.
for your next year going forward, maybe even a little bit more. Your, your next group of five will easily be twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars more than these were.
There was a space for general discussion.
For five years, it's their five grand a year.
I think that we need to, um, look at, um, different town council as well. I think that we need to be bidding out for that, and we need, um, somebody who gets back to us, uh, a little bit more quickly, somebody with more, um, human resource, uh, personnel law, uh, there's, I would like to see if, if there's someone, either.
Who is our town council? I, I was never sure on the name.
Uh, Deutch and Williams and, um, it's just Deutch and Williams.
Deutch Williams.
Yeah, but there are other people, but you.
His names are on the letterhead, though, isn't it?
Paul Durant, yes.
Is it?
But still, anyway, I just, I want it out there.
That's a good idea.
Tony was very surprised that was our, our council.
Yeah.
How long has Paul been with us? Uh, how long has it been?
Since at least thirteen.
Okay.
It was like, maybe twelve.
Okay.
I just think that we should have more of a discussion with that.
We'll put that on the agenda for Monday night.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Just, if you would, please, um, save the evening of May thirtieth?
Isn't that, that's Memorial Day, right? Or thirtieth is?
It's Tuesday after Memorial.
It's Tuesday after Memorial Day.
Yeah, but you're still gonna have to.
I'll still come over.
Oh, you hadn't, you hadn't, I, I wrote it down, but you hadn't decided the time?
Uh, we have one other possibility, so I'd like to say six, if that's agreeable.
And that's for signing the, okay.
Um, there's something else that we might be able to add to the agenda that night, but I, I just won't know until next Tuesday, probably.
Okay, so six-thirty on Tuesday. Hey, I have a motion.
Second.
Uh, that's second, any other discussion?
No, si- I'm sorry, six or six-thirty?
Six.
Six, Cam.
Okay.
Did you say six-thirty?
I did, so.
Okay, six.
Six, if it's doable for fifteen minutes.
Come back at six-thirty.
Because we have, we have possibly another item to add that evening, but I won't know until probably next Tuesday morning.
Sorry, I just thought I heard you say that.
No, you, you saved me, I showed up at six-thirty.
I just wanted to hear. Yeah, okay. Do we have a motion in a second?
I have a motion to second, any other discussion?
The second end.
He did.
Cam.
It's not bad.
I see none. Diane. Diane.
I'm good.
Yeah?
I'm good.
Yay.
I'm way good, thanks for coming, everybody.